Tracy, I'm here.
Um.
Sorry for the delay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Great. Give me a second here.
Okay, TV, we'll be ready in a few. Correct.
Okay. And Tracy, obviously, you're doing the invocation, right?
Yep.
Okay. So tell me when we're starting.
All right, TV, you ready? All right, you can go, Drew.
Hey, good afternoon, El Segundo. We're calling to order the regularly scheduled council meeting. Today, June 2nd at 3:00 PM. Sorry for the delay getting started. We're going to start with the invocation led by our city clerk, Tracy Weaver, followed by the pledge of allegiance led by Mayor Pro Tem Pimentel.
All right. Heavenly Father, Provider of Strength, we pray that as leaders of our community, we might have the insight and courage to serve the citizens of El Segundo with wisdom and truth. We ask for your guidance in making decisions that affect our community, ensuring that decisions made this evening are in the best interest of our city and all its citizens. Amen.
And Mayor, if I just might note that the reg- the specially- special notice meeting is also, um, is open at this time?
Okay, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
Join us and face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flags of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation indivisible, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. All right, now is the time and place for public communications. And Madam Clerk, I believe we have some email correspondence to read, as well as possibly some people in the chamber.
That is correct. Mona will coordinate, uh, chamber. If you want, I can read the letters first. Is- does that work, Mona?
Cecil Brown, come up and speak.
Oh, thank you. Thank you all for giving me the forum to say a few words. I'll promise to be brief. In light of what's going on in our community and our, our nation, I thought it was important that I share an experience. I think having more voices heard can help all those understand the plight of people that look like me in your town. And that may help you to think about how we can continue to make this a better place to be. Approximately three years ago, my son, one of five of our children, and we've been living here for five years now. At the time, he was attending the El Segundo High School and a member of the varsity basketball team. As many of you know, there is always a fundraising element to the athletic sports at the high school. He was charged that night with several of his team members to go out into the community and fundraise, which essentially meant knocking on doors to ask for contributions for the team. As part of that exercise, he was wearing, along with his teammates, the uniform for the El Segundo basketball team. My son, at the time, was probably 6'2" or 6'3", much darker than I am, and this was in the fall, so this was at the early twilight hours. He was knocking on doors with four of his teammates who all happened to be white. After several houses of, of attempts to collect funds for the team, five police cars descended upon him, and specifically him. And of those, when the cars, when the cops received, when got out of the car, they approached him and asked him what was he doing. Now, as you can imagine, as you can play that experience out in your head, that was his first interaction with the police department. That has left a permanent stain on him about his interaction with police. I, as a grown man, have had many interactions, but I'm ashamed to think, to think that that's his interaction with the police. And as a result of that, he is feared to go out into the public to do anything like what he had promised to do for his coach. My wife, his mother, fears for his life every time he leaves the house. And as you can imagine, if you're a mother or a parent, you understand, you may not understand that fear, but it's real. So I raise that as an opportunity for you to understand the things that we go through as people of color in this town. I moved to El Segundo for two reasons, security and strong public schools. I found the schools to be great so far. The security is great, but I am concerned about what has happened over the last four years as it relates to citizens within this town and my interactions, or my kids' interactions with the police. Thank you for the opportunity to share, for me to share that story with you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. I appreciate your comments.
Mayor, they're coming in one by one, so it may just be time in between.
Um, and Mr. Brown, is Mr. Brown still there, Mona?
Yes.
Would you just encourage him to reach out to me? I'd like to, I'd like to discuss further and understand more.
I'd be happy to.
Thank you, sir.
Drew, Scott will want me to let you know that he'll speak to each speaker afterward, follow-up to, okay?
Great, thank you.
Um, we have no other, um, members of the public here for public communication.
Okay. I encourage the group out front to, to speak their mind. There were probably a couple hundred, I would imagine. Kind of hard to assess being in the middle of the group, but I guess no one took us up on it. So I also gave them our email address or my email address, so hopefully they'll reach out that way. Okay. So we are on to, we're on to staff presentations then, is that correct, Tracy?
No, I have, uh, three to read.
Oh, yeah. And then roll call, I'm sorry. Continue, please.
Sorry about that. Um, my name is Neil Cadman. I live at 627 Whiting Street, and I own DeLuca Pasta at 225 Richmond Street. Regarding our item A, number one, the opening of restaurants. I appreciate the swift action of the city, including the city manager, Public Works, et cetera, to allow restaurants to apply to use the public right-of-way, to place tables for patrons on the sidewalks or in parking lots. However, this will have little to no impact to most restaurants in our downtown core. At DeLuca Pasta, for example, we have room for two, two top tables, meaning we would only be able to accommodate four extra patrons when we are faced with losing 40 customers during each shift. What we need is a three-step approach. One, immediate right-of-way of seating for sidewalks, parking lots, et cetera. Two, a pilot program to shut down traffic and allow restaurants to use the streets for al fresco dining. A program for one or two nights per week does not make sense from logistical cost view that includes items like setup, breakdown, et cetera. I would be glad to volunteer and lose all parking on the 200 block of Richmond Street to allow the Slice and Pint, DeLuca Pasta, Second City Bistro, and perhaps even Good Stuff and Cafe Metro to use the allocated areas. Three, a long-range plan to re-engineer our downtown core into a shopping and dining destination with one-way streets. Sorry. Time is up for that speaker. Um, destination with one-way streets, permanent al fresco dining, street vendors, and lighting, et cetera. While I believe the restaurant community can work with city staff to achieve goals one and two on a short-term or permanent basis, I think it is the correct time to create a downtown business improvement district that can work with the city to generate funds, hire staff, conduct marketing, and special events for all downtown businesses. Our biggest budget cannot, our city budget cannot absorb the costs associated with a true imaginative, imaginative approach to creating the quaint village atmosphere that would enhance our city. If we stay with only sidewalk dining, I can assure you that will more than likely not reopen DeLuca Pasta. Thank you, Neil Cadman, owner, gen going manager. Letter number two. Dear Mayor Boyle, City Council, and city staff, first of all, I would like to applaud your efforts to solicit input from the local business community on how to reopen. Communication from the city has been outstanding on the topic. After learning specifics of the six-foot spacing rules and group size restrictions on restaurants, I have serious concern over restaurants being able to survive or even reopen to sit-down dining unless significant use of outdoor space is allowed. With some restaurants, including the Slice and Pint, needing to replace up to and over 100 seats, the demand for space is massive when one considers that a floor-top table with proper spacing now requires an area of about 81 square feet, roughly nine by nine. I propose the city work with businesses on the 200 block of Richmond and 100 block of West Grand Avenue to block off the 200 block of Richmond Street, starting at Grand Avenue, to the parking lot entrance by Franklin. I ask that the city commit to a full-time trial through the summer to give the businesses an opportunity to invest and beautify the area with lights and planters and make the area a unique feature for the city. I understand there is talk of a, of a few-days-a-week solution, but I do not see a constant setup and breakdown as a viable option due to the sheer numbers of tables and the requirement on the city to block off the street from traffic. Additionally, a setup and tear-down option. Additionally, a setup and tear-down option and makes any investment for beautification much less likely. Please consider removable bollards and walk-only center area of the street that can easily be cleared for fire access if that is the hurdle. I feel the Slice and Pint, DeLuca Pasta, and other businesses have powerful draw and could make something special out of the small stretch. It will also serve as a pilot project for something that has been discussed many times over the years. The role of the city should be to allocate the space equitatively among businesses and have those businesses handle the financing and setup of their chairs and tables and possibly share in the infrastructure costs. Finally, beyond the needs of my business and beyond Richmond Street, I feel the city is missing an opportunity to do something novel and exciting. We are all well aware that other cities are taking big swings at big ideas to drive business to their downtown areas. Our downtown has become a destination, and we now risk obsolescence with other areas moving to this desirable outdoor dining model. Please carefully consider the big benefits of this idea for both the city and restaurants versus the very minimal risk. Thank you, and please let me know if I can answer any questions or help in any way. Rob Croxell.
Oh, sorry.
The last one. Um, this is from David, I'm going to mess this up, David Bolian. Dear City Council members, I'd like to share with you all that, all that is my understanding that city staff are working on a vital code amendment for this year's code cycle cleanup and update that I fully support. The update is to reduce the width of the compact spaces from eight feet six inches to seven feet six inches, which is consistent with every single city in the county and po- and possib- possibly the entire state. El Segundo suffers from lack of parking spaces, and some properties are simply unusable due to lack of parking. And this minor code update, to be consistent with every city around us, will increase parking spaces by the hundreds overnight and thousands in the next few years. Cars are certainly not wider in El Segundo as they are all in our neighboring cities. Coupled with this change is the need to increase the maximum compact percent, compact from 20% to a much higher percentage. Perhaps 40% is appropriate, or 80% in some zones like Smoky Hollow, which could significantly benefit from more compact spaces being allowed. An increase in percentage significantly higher than 20% would be consistent with the city of Los Angeles and others. I spoke to and believe that the planning director and planning manager both understand and agree with the need to update this antiquated code, sections regarding compact space width and maximum percentage. I look forward very, I look very much forward to the upcoming code cycle update later this summer, and would like to encourage the city council members to support this much-needed update. Thank you, and I hope everyone is staying safe these days. Thanks, David Bolian, Bolian Architects. And that's all I have.
Tracy?
Yes.
We do have additional, uh, members of the public that'd like to speak.
Okay.
First, we're going to have Natasha Lee.
Um, hello. I was here because there is a video that's been going around of one of the family members of one of the council members tearing down a poster. that was raising funds for the Black Lives Matter movement. And I know that she is a teacher or a substitute teacher at the school I go to, El Segundo High School. And I would just really like this council's support to say that she will not be, she will no longer have any jobs teaching at that school because I don't want to attend a school that would support this type of racial intolerance.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. Did you want, are you done? Sorry, it's hard to tell the audio.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay, typically, we hear all the public communications and then the council members will have an opportunity to comment, okay?
Okay.
Thank you for, thank you very much. It's noted in the record. I appreciate that.
All right, we have Jessica Lee that will come up and speak now.
Hello. How are you guys today? Good?
Good, good, yeah. It's generally, Ms. Lee, it's certainly a one-way thing, but we're good, thank you. And then we have three minutes. Everything you say will be in the public record. And then the council, once you're done and everyone's done, I don't know how many people are there to speak, will have an opportunity to reflect and make comments if we'd like, okay?
Okay, well, I love this town and I am proud to be part of it. I went to El Segundo Middle School. I went to El Segundo High School. I think it has wonderful people, but it makes me very upset. And it saddens me to see that recently there's been behaviors that demonstrate racism and intolerance, and I think it is unacceptable. And I will not tolerate that type of behavior in this town because I think it could do better. And I think it's up to you guys to promote that sentiment, to promote equality and tolerance. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. Well-stated.
Okay, thank you. I expect change. Thank you.
Okay, we might have a couple more. If you could hold on a minute. All right, next up will be Paula Lee.
Good afternoon. I appreciate you taking the time to listen to me and to hear about my concerns. And my concerns are, as a parent of biracial children that are not, they are not black, but because of they are biracial, they are constantly being not taunted. And I don't even understand, think that the people of El Segundo think that they are treating them differently because of the color of their skin, but they are. And this happens at the school, this happens with other children. And I understand it is not, it's not something that you can control, but there are things that you can control. My children were very upset yesterday when they saw someone that is a member of our community not allowing other people to express what they believe in and to have their voices heard and removing flyers that were posted legally and in, in the, in the, in the city for ways for the community to be able to help the Black Lives Movement. I understand that it's not the job of the city to deal with this matter, but I believe it is the job of the city if you indeed want to stand behind the words that you're here to listen to all of us and to hear what we have to say. It is the job of the city to condemn not only this action, but any other actions that are taken by people that do not want to listen to someone that is different from them and that, you know, be it based on their race, be it based on their religious beliefs. Because I do want to believe that El Segundo can do better and El Segundo is trying to do better. But in order for me to believe, you need to act. Because silence right now is complicity with everyone that does not want this country to be a country where everyone is equal and everyone should be equal. So that's, that's what I have to say. And you know, it is my experience that I am married to an Asian man and when we first moved to El Segundo, my husband was followed around town for several days. I never had that problem by the police in El Segundo. And I am a white person and my husband is Asian and my kids are half-Asian, you know, and they could pass for white. So I cannot even believe, start to understand what the black people in El Segundo go through. And I just want you to acknowledge that because there's nothing wrong in acknowledging that we have not done enough and we need to do more. You know, just be humble and listen to the people that are sharing their pain with you and do something about it. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mrs. Lee.
All right, next we have Sean Lee.
So I don't know if any of you guys remember, but I was actually here a few months ago. I was part of the group that, with the El Segundo High School that came here to pitch, pitch help for the new, for the new teen center. And I, I mean, that, that group that pitched a teen center, we were all great and everything, but I just can't believe that, like, in, in the midst of that, there were probably like, I don't know, a few, few police shootings, few ra- racial bias anywhere, but your guys' priorities was with renovating a teen center, which not many people had a problem with in the first place. You, you got, you guys can't say that it, that it's an accident when it happens to black people over and over and over again. And I want to believe that my city is better and I want to believe that my city can, is better than all those other cities that where the police do this every single day. But, but I came to, to this protest and I, on my way, on my way to the protest, not even at the protest, I was heckled by like two people. Like, like, I, I know, I, I know you guys believe you're doing your best, but you guys have to do more because we're, because if you guys think that what you guys are doing are enough, I can assure you that it isn't.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. I, thank you.
Next we have Meredith Ying.
Hello, my name's Meredith Yinger. I am a longtime resident of El Segundo and I feel that if you have white privilege, which we all do, privilege should be used to help others and to really uplift those voices who have for so long been silenced. And I know specifically in El Segundo, I would love to be proud to say that we are making conscientious effort and changes in the city to promote equality and justice. And we all know that we have a budget and the budget should also include diversity and inclusion training for everyone in our government, our local officials, and those who are in the police force. Because we need to be conscientious and we need to be setting the standard because as a city, we have that power and we need to be using our voice and our privilege for good and to help all people. And it's been going on for far too long. We've, you know, benefited enough from the system. Now it's time that we rebuild the system. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Yinger.
It is the end of public communication here in the council chamber.
Okay, I'll open it up for council or city manager comments. And I think the city manager comments are probably most appropriate for the comments related to downtown and the comment related to compact parking. Before we go there, I'll just say that and I heard one of the speakers talk about listening, be humble. And it was humbling experience to be in the midst of so many passionate members of our society, mostly youth, but fair amount of adults as well. And I, I do believe we have some work to do as a town. I've lived here twenty-five years and while El Segundo has changed, it's, it's better than it was. We have work to do. And I'm gonna quote Mr. Lee, "Be humble and listen." I like that approach. In the spirit of continuous improvement, I probably could have listened more and spoken less when I was just addressing the crowd out front. And I like the ideas about diversity, inclusion training as well. I know we do, I know we do that in our city. I know the Chief Whalen holds his police force to those standards. Again, I believe we should do more and we can do more. And so I'm gonna reach out to Mr. Brown, who was the first one to speak. And I've also made a commitment to look into the petition that was, is circulated with now over, I think, seventeen hundred people on that petition asking for some change. And so I have a couple of action items as a result of my meeting earlier today with those people. So that, those are my comments. Anyone else? Sorry, I looked away for a second. Oh, okay, Councilmember Persnick.
Yeah, so I just wanted to let everyone know that I spoke to my sister and she acknowledges that removing the flyer, the informational flyer from Main Street was wrong and that residents should not be taking flyers from public property. If you have any questions about flyers and public property, please reach out to the City Code of Compliance Department on the city's website or you can call them at three one oh five two four two three eight seven. I'm deeply saddened by the senseless tragic death of George Floyd in Minneapolis. All files on the city council are committed to fostering a culture of diversity and sensitivity and all members of our community and for society at large. The El Segundo Police Department has been through extensive training and takes proactive approach to make sure that racial diversity is respected and celebrated. But as Mr. Brown indicated earlier in opening, in opening comments, we have a lot more work to do. Respect for all members of the community is a core value of both the police department, the city leadership, and the council. I watched our communities evolve and become what it is today. We are more inclusive and will continue to be more as going forward. We are open and committed to working with the community and grow and improve. If anyone would like to talk to me personally, please reach out to me via email. My email is Carol, or C-Pirz, C-P-I-R-Z-T at elsegundo.org. We are here to listen to, to you and as Mayor Boil, Drew Boyle, has indicated, we want to hear from you. We do want change for our community. It's important that you are future leaders, our youth, and it's important that you do have a voice. So please reach out and I will be more than happy to talk with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Persnick. I'll also say that one of the young lady who I believe is at the high school reached out via email, really well-thought-out, comprehensive email that I looped the mayor Protem in on as well as the city manager. She had some great ideas for how we can do more. Mayor Protem thought out a great suggestion of expanding our strategic goal, number one, to include inclusion and diversity and other things related to people. So we're gonna look at that. We are looking at our budget process right now, so we do have an opportunity to look at how we appropriate, appropriate funds to make a difference. I think Mayor Protem also suggested using the Arts and Culture Committee to, because they're so focused on cultural issues and diversity and, and expression, that that would be a great forum for starting such a venture. And I think those are really worthy things. And I also committed via email to talk to her and the people that she's been speaking with. And then I had that opportunity, as I've already mentioned earlier this afternoon, which is somewhat ad hoc, but happened nonetheless. All right, anyone else? Mayor Protem, our councilor, Drew.
If, if, if I, if I could weigh in and expand on that a bit, Mr. Mayor, the reason I, I made a recommendation including the Culture Committee because as they went to the percent for arts, they had a enormous inclusion campaign to ensure that as they were vetting art projects, that they were understanding some of the biases that they may impute to that. So I suggested that was something that could be built upon and it fit nicely with some of the other things we've done as part of strategic goal number one, whether it's the Age and Place initiatives or Aging with Dignity, funding the public health professionals and dealing with the unsheltered homeless. So it, it all seemed to sort of fit in that goal. And I would recommend here, I, I don't know if we, we have the chief and we may not, and he may want to, to reply in writing, but you know, starting in two thousand twelve, the city made its first big initiatives toward how we, how we look at police and under Chief Tavares, the initial expansion of some of the transparency projects culminating in two thousand sixteen, when we had unfortunately the last big gyration about police activities, particularly as it involves some of the unfortunate killings with, with black people. We had the Transformation and Transparency Page and a big training and refresher training review. And I think the chief very eloquently was able to speak to that earlier this weekend. But if he's here, I think that it might be worth him either touching base in writing or if he's available to answer any questions about how police are retrained in this regard. It might do something to answer some of the questions of the public that we have right there.
Great suggestion. Chief, are you there? I am here and I believe I have a speaking part after your comments, so I'd be happy to talk to that point then. Okay, great. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sorry.
Councilmember Drew or Councilmember Nicol?
I just want to thank the, the few members of the public that chose to come up and speak to us. I, I know that many times the public will look to us to come out and be vocal and just know that we are always paying attention, we are always listening. And at times like this, yes, our voices are important, but I believe our ears are even more important as your policymakers. So just know that we are listening. And as Councilmember Persnick said, our email addresses, our contact information is on the El Segundo website. Please feel free to email us, reach out. In the modern age of Google, I'm pretty sure if you Googled my name, you would find my home address, telephone number, and various email addresses. Contact me. I am happy to discuss any and all potential policy things or initiatives that we could try to spearhead here as council. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Nicol. Councilmember Drew?
Yeah, just like, I, I don't wanna, you know, belabor the entire thing that we've all, all said here, but I agree that we have, we have the needs, we have the means, and we have the desires to make these appropriate changes. And I believe that we are in a position to do so. And to echo Scott's comments, it was really nice to see the youth getting involved and hearing their voice heard. And, and I think we need to have more of that. I applaud the three that got up there and spoke. It's, it's not easy to do that, especially in a, in a Zoom call in the middle of an empty chamber. And I think we need more of that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Mr. Mitnik, would you like to comment on any of the items that were discussed? Scott, you there?
All right, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Okay, I'm in the chamber. It's still echo. Hang on. Is this better?
Scott, having technical difficulties.
Speaker. He said, okay. He'll do that right there. I'm, I'm sorry.
Scott, we can't hear you. You're really garbled.
Tracy, can you open up the public communication picture or is that me?
You'll have to do it, Mona.
Okay, did you make me a host?
Should we, can I make a procedural suggestion?
Bottom of your screen.
Tracy, Mona, maybe we come back to Scott and he can follow up with these comments when moving to staff presentations?
Yeah, the first thing on the, one of the items on the special agenda is a ratification of the city manager administrative proclamation of an emergency related to the civil unrest. And I think to deal with two issues, one, I think the council wanted to hear from the police chief on this issue and some of the questions that were asked. And also that will lead into then also taking action on the emergency order that was issued. So perhaps we could start there.
Yeah, let's start with Chief Whelan. Chief, you were going to speak anyway, let's have you go, then we'll go to Scott as he's getting squared away here. Thank you.
I need to take a roll, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Councilmember Drew? Councilmember Nichol?
Here.
Councilmember Purstuck?
Here. Okay, Scott.
Mayor Protem Pimentel?
Here.
And Mayor Boyle.
Here. Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, chief.
All right, good afternoon, mayor and council and El Segundo community. I have, well, I have two things I want to talk about. I'd like to talk briefly about what we've seen over the last week, what we're going to prepare and what we have done. That will probably be a somewhat sterile conversation. And then after that, I'd like to speak directly to the community about the specific questions that have been asked and received quite a few emails over the last few days. And I'd like to address those as well. So to begin with, you know, following the death of George Floyd, we saw widespread protests and many of those turned violent over the weekend. In the city of Los Angeles, there were several looting incidents, Santa Monica, Culver City. We really did not have any significant criminal events that occurred down here in the South Bay, although we have seen several protests over the last few days. You probably saw on the news yesterday Manhattan Beach had well over 1,000 people. Very peaceful, it went from Manhattan Beach City Hall to Hermosa and back to Manhattan Beach. There was some indication that there may have been a protest at Galleria today, but I'm being told that that did not materialize. We've had some protests here in El Segundo last weekend. We had one, obviously we saw one today. And, you know, I've said this before, but I couldn't be more proud of our community and the way they've come together and the way they've come together to peacefully voice their concerns. I thought it was fantastic, it was outstanding. I did go out and speak with the group earlier today that's in our city plaza. And I intend to be out this weekend, Friday and Saturday, speaking with the event organizers and being present at those events as well. So I do look forward to that. The police department has increased its staffing. I shouldn't say we've increased, we've redirected the way we staff. We've taken all non-p patrol personnel and put them into a patrol assignment so that we have adequate resources in the field to deal with any situations that come up. They've gone to a 12-hour, 12-hour on and off type of shift. This, the net result of this is about a 300% increase in our staffing out in the field. And again, that's 24 hours a day, both day and night. And I'm confident that we have the ability to safely manage any events that we have seen. But we're also keeping the county and our area prized of events. So should events grow out of hand, we do have the ability to bring in additional resources if necessary. Again, with the events that we have here, we're in continuous communication with the event organizers. And by all indications, these will be very peaceful as they were last weekend. And we will be diligent to make sure that if there are those that come from out of the area wishing to change the dynamics of that protest, we will be able to identify them and deal with that as appropriate. We haven't had any sort of looting incidents here in El Segundo. There is concern and some intelligence that there may be people from, and gang members in particular, who are going into what they perceive to be more affluent areas to commit acts of vandalism and burglary. We haven't seen that. There have been a few instances of that in our neighboring South Bay cities, but it has not been widespread. And so we'll continue to keep our eyes out for that. We do have a curfew that's in place this evening. I believe what's going to happen tonight, city manager, you can throw something at the screen if I'm wrong, but I believe we're going to rescind our city curfew and we're going to follow the county curfew as that applies to us being in the county of Los Angeles. Now, this morning, the county told us the curfew would start at nine. And as this council meeting started, we got a wireless alert saying it started at 10:00. It's not unusual for us to get misinformation from the county. So we're going to have to look through that. And we'll make sure to push out on our city website and social media what the correct curfew time is so that our residents are aware of that. So please, if you're listening, make sure you pay attention to our city website so you can get the most updated information on that curfew. And we will, we will continue to follow the county curfew order as long as it is in place. It's evaluated daily based on the situations around us. We're very fortunate that the last couple of days, while they have had significant protests, to my knowledge, these have not resulted in incidents of violence and looting like we saw Sunday and Monday. So I remain very cautiously optimistic. I hope that as a region, as a state, as a nation, that we're going to move past this in a meaningful way. And perhaps once that happens, then the county can look at rescinding that curfew order and we will make sure that we have that information out there. Speaking to, speaking to what's going on, this is, this is tough. You know, I've said this publicly, George Floyd, his death was horrible. It is just unfathomable what happened to him. It's unconscionable that police officers could stand by and watch this occur. This is not, this is not something that, that I or anybody I know would ever condone. And we're, we are truly, truly, truly saddened that this occurred. Since, since this happened, so over the last week or so, I've gotten, I've gotten hundreds of emails from our community. And there is a lot of pain out there. There is a lot of pain. And, and I'm actually, I'm saddened that, that this is, this is occurring. Because, you know, I don't know how many people know my background, but I have, I've done quite a bit of work in this area of bias and implicit bias and racial profiling. Just because some of the things that I've seen in my law enforcement career, I did not feel were right. And I wanted to try to move the needle on that if I could. I've actually written a research paper on implicit bias in the police. And it's true that there is bias out there. I believe it's true that African Americans are treated disproportionately than white people are. And so there's a lot of things that myself and my peers have tried through the years. And what I'm hearing now is that it hasn't been enough, that more needs to be done. And, you know, years ago, we'll say five or 10 years ago, what was, I guess, interesting is that the narrative was directed solely at the police, that the police were racist, the police need to do more. You know, law enforcement, municipal law enforcement is founded on racism. That's a sad truth. Municipal law enforcement initiated in the slave patrol days. And it's an embarrassing part of our past that not many people like to talk about, but it's true. And then as the enforcement arm of local government, we were the front and center of putting down peaceful protests during the 60s. And so it's no surprise that we, we become a very visible representation of what is taking place beneath the layers of our society. And so my hope, my real hope, and what I think I've seen out there is that the narrative now is about police because of the killing of George Floyd. But I think people are starting to understand that this is a deeper conversation. And I think by having this deeper conversation, and I applaud you, Mayor, and Mayor Protem and the others that have said that we need to incorporate this into the very fabric of what we do as a city, because that's how we're going to move forward from this. I don't think we're going to move forward by pointing fingers at the police department and saying that you have racist cops. We certainly will do everything we can to fix that. But I think as a community, we need to acknowledge that the responsibility is on all of us to fix this. I've heard from people who say they're scared for their kids to go out there. And they say, chief, what do I tell my, my kids when they're pulled over by the police and they're afraid of being murdered? I mean, that hits you hard. I'm a father, you know? And I haven't had to have that conversation with my kids. But it really hits me hard when I hear people tell me that, because that's not right. And we need to fix that, and we will fix that. And I have a very good mentor of mine who tells me, there's always more we can do. And you ask me what kind of training we do, we do a lot of training. And I almost feel like right now, giving off a list of all the training classes we had, what might just seem like lip service, but we engage in tactical communications, de-escalation training, procedural justice, implicit bias. I mean, a whole litany of training. But despite that, you know, like Mr. Brown came in at our public comments, people still feel as though they are being pulled over or targeted because of their race. And that's just simply not right. If you've heard me speak at any of the events I've been at, when we talk about, see something, say something, the one thing I always say is, everyone has a right to walk down any sidewalk free of harassment from the police, regardless of who you are, where you live, or what your skin color is. And if that's still occurring, that's wrong, and we're going to fix it. As long as I'm here, I will not rest until we do all that we can to try to move the needle even further on that. And so when the dust settles on what's occurring around us and we have a little more time to kind of regroup, I look forward to some sort of widespread panel we can put together, representatives from the community, representatives from the city, faith-based organizations. I really think this is a good opportunity for a community-wide effort to change the direction that we're doing and really acknowledge what we're hearing today and what we've heard this past week. And I probably overstayed my welcome with the comments, but I'm free for any questions if you have it.
Thank you, chief. Any questions or comments from the council? I really appreciate the candor, chief. I didn't, I'm embarrassed to say I didn't know that about the history of law enforcement. And I appreciate your candor. And I also appreciate your willingness to embrace the feedback immediately from our community and push for doing more and making a difference. So much appreciated. Thank you.
It's consistent with what's just been discussed and the background that was provided in front of the council this evening. On Sunday, May 31st, the city manager took action consistent with what was occurring in other communities to declare a state of emergency based upon the civil unrest. And as part of that, also issued administrative order to set a curfew. While that administrative order is being rescinded and we're going to rely on the county's order and the hours they're going to set, the council still this evening needs to entertain the resolution that, and I'll just read it by title, "A Resolution of the El Segundo City Council Confirming the Existence of a Local Emergency and Ratifying City Manager's Administrative Proclamation of Local Emergency dated May 31st, 2020, and Administrative Order Number One." Again, those were what I just explained to you, but that is in front of the council for adoption this evening.
I'll move adoption.
You state your last name.
Oh, sorry, Boyle. Thank you.
Nichol, second.
Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Councilmember Drew?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichol?
Aye.
Councilmember Purstuck?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Pimentel?
Yes.
Mayor Boyle?
Yes.
Pass by both.
To reiterate, we are, we are now and currently have two states of emergency, if you will, based upon two different subject matters. One is the civil unrest and the second is with regard to the COVID issue. Again, at this point in time, with regard to any curfews, we will be utilizing the city's, the county's curfew order unless it will be determined by the city manager in consultation with the police chief that we would want to be more restrictive. We cannot be less restrictive than the county, but we can be more. I don't have anything further on that topic. City manager, do you have anything?
Mr. Mayor, I'm so sorry for the technical difficulties we've been having. I'm in the council chamber with the speakers. And at this time, the police chief's going to come over and then we're going to go as a group and chief and I will follow up with the speakers to address their concerns in more detail. And in my absence, Deputy City Manager Barbara Boss will fill in for me, then I'll come back to the council meeting. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you.
And I think at this time, we could switch to the, we have related items on the special agenda. And excuse me while I swap back and forth. We have a special presentation by Chief Donovan with regard to a COVID update. And then he'll be followed by Deputy City Manager Barbara Boss with regard to a COVID business update. And then we will have for your consideration an action to take with regard to one of the city manager's administrative proclamations and ratification of that. I think the Chief Donovan is up first.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Boyle, members of council. We're definitely in a unique time in that we're managing two major crises at the same time. Fortunately, our incident management team was in a position to quickly transition and pivot. And so we have members of the team that are now in support of the civil unrest and supporting the police department and Chief Whelan. And then members of the team that were continuing to work on the COVID-19 response. And so the team's active and working in concert with these two separate disasters. I wanted to talk to this group about three main topics. I'll be brief and then give time for any questions. The current health metrics that we present, testing that's done regionally. And we've been able to get some information on local testing data here in El Segundo, which paints a clearer picture of how COVID-19 is impacting our community and contract tracing and what takes place there. And so just about 20 minutes ago, the county of Los Angeles released the daily totals of today's LA County health metrics. Cumulatively, in LA County, there are 58,234 cases of positive COVID-19. That's an increase of 1,155 cases from yesterday. And there are 2,489 deaths. That's an increase of 46 cases from yesterday. We are continuing to see a decline in the curve of both the number of cases positive as well as the deaths. Locally in El Segundo, we have 36 confirmed cases. That's a zero increase from yesterday. And we have a adjusted case number of four. That's a zero increase as well. And that adjusted number looks back on a 14-day period. And we look at the members of our community that have been identified as testing positive in the last 14 days, that will be in what's considered to be a quarantine period. And once that 14-day quarantine period expires, they would be taken off the adjusted case level. And so our numbers are maintaining on our relatively flat in comparison to the county. This is all very good health data in that much of what the county has done in their various health orders relies upon these health metrics to guide protocols and principles such as opening up of businesses and opening up of city programs and the like. And so we'll keep a keen and close eye on that. As it relates to testing, testing is a very important component of COVID-19. The county of Los Angeles and the city of Los Angeles are in partnership, offering free testing throughout the county. Any member of our community, whether they're symptomatic or not, could go to covid19.lacounty.gov and find an open test site. That said, there are a few test sites that have been closed due to civic, civil unrest and a few test sites that have reduced hours. But all of that is posted on that website. And I would encourage residents of El Segundo that if they'd like to get free testing, they can do so. Some information that is pertinent and again, paints a better picture for us. Los Angeles County has a public health dashboard. And from that dashboard, these are numbers that are effective as of June 1st of 2020. There are 633, 260 residents that have been tested. And as of, as of that date, there is an 8% test positive rate, 8%. That has gone down, um, substantially from the height of about 14%. In El Segundo, 896 residents have been tested and we have a four percent test positive rate based on the number of people tested and, and the number of, uh, people that have, um, been identified as being positive for COVID-19. That's half of the county average, uh, which again is a good, good sign for our community. Um, prior to the civil unrest, the County of Los Angeles was ramped up and they were testing an average of 77,000 people per week. The hope is, uh, at, uh, a, a not-too-distant future, they'll get back up into that, um, high rate of testing. The more people tested paints a better picture in terms of the, uh, actual infection infectious rate and it provides better data, uh, which the governor and the County of Los Angeles Board of Supervisors use to reopen, um, our community. Um, I will say, the County of Los Angeles Public Health Office put out a note yesterday identifying the fact that many non-household members not wearing face coverings that were out in the public protests are encouraged to quarantine for 14 days. And so if you did not have face covers and you're in mass large gatherings, it's recommended you, uh, quarantine for 14 days. And we'll be, we'll be, uh, paying close attention in the next three to 14 days, uh, watching the county numbers, uh, show, as we see those loud, large, uh, uh, crowds of people. Um, finally, I'd like to talk, uh, quickly about, uh, contract tracing. Uh, this is the process where, um, as an individual is identified as being testing positive, um, there are, uh, folks that will do contact follow-up. Uh, they'll, uh, talk to the person, they'll determine who they were in contact with. They'll subsequently, um, do follow-up and, um, do health screening and monitor the health and wellbeing of those folks that were in contact. The hope was that as, um, we saw the number of positive cases in Los Angeles County and the state, that contract tracing would become, uh, an important component of follow-up. And the hope was, uh, to get volunteers in our community that would be interested or NGOs, non-government organizations to volunteer their time and effort. Um, in our research, we found that the County of Los Angeles is the lead. Um, the state pushes the responsibility to the local health office. And the County of Los Angeles, because it's still a medical HIPAA, um, issue, they are not accepting volunteers. Uh, they are, um, testing for positions through the LA County Public Human Resources, uh, Division. And, and they do have a position that is a, a public health investigator. Um, and I, I would assume that they're, um, looking to add, um, personnel to continue this, um, contract, excuse me, con- contract tracing, uh, capability. And so we'll, we'll continue to, uh, uh, hope that that's taking place so we can get additional health information. Finally, our city's continuing our efforts, um, as it relates to COVID-19, the incident management team and city staff are working at focusing on our city operations. That includes reopening city hall for public facing, uh, as the community opens. We want city hall to open to support that. Continuing to focus on our city programs, parks and recreation, uh, and our business recovery, which, uh, Barbara Voss will speak of in a bit. And finally, uh, we're still spending on a considerable amount of effort and energy on Park Vista to make sure that those residents are, are cared for. And so that ends my report and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions for the bar chief? No? Very comprehensive. Thank you, sir. Okay. Next up, we have Deputy City Manager Barbara Voss.
Thank you, Mayor Boils. Good evening, um, to all of city council. Um, wanted to provide an update, um, on our, uh, back-to-business business recovery initiative. And, um, seems like a really long time ago now, but last Friday, we received a revised order from, uh, Los Angeles County Department of Public Health, allowing, uh, retailers and restaurants, uh, to reopen restaurants at 60% capacity, um, with several guidelines and protocols in place. Um, and so our, um, immediate action from that was to, uh, ask our restaurants, uh, all over the city, uh, what they needed to help to bring in, um, a sufficient number of customers to, uh, remain profitable, um, and viable given this constraint on, uh, occupancy. And, you know, we thought it was going to be 25% occupancy as the restriction. And so we were happy to hear 60%, but then that opened a door to, um, you know, even, uh, with 60% being allowed, it's difficult with the physical distancing requirements of six feet of separation, um, to even get close to 60% because you can't have people too close together within the restaurant. So we really heard from our business community that, um, they wanted to do, um, expand outdoors and have additional seating outdoors. Uh, so we, uh, developed, uh, there was a citywide team, uh, formed. We developed a, um, application process. We got that application out to our, uh, 12,834 business subscribers that we have on our list now. Um, and received, um, I think close to 35 applications back. Um, the planning and building safety department and the public works department, as well as PD and fire, have all been working together to, uh, issue permits, including over the weekend. Um, and, you know, given that subsequent to the order being revised, we got a curfew order, um, which did slow down the reopening of restaurants, um, since they needed to be closed at 6:00. So we're happy to announce, um, as Chief Wellen mentioned, um, the curfew has been extended now to 9:00 PM. Um, and we did get a, one text that said 10:00 PM, but I believe it to be 9:00 PM, um, tonight countywide. And we'll be following, um, the countywide, uh, curfew requirements of 9:00 PM to 5:00 AM. So the restaurants will be able to stay open later, starting immediately. Um, and then, uh, in general, our outreach for the back-to-business program um, has included 74 communications to our business contacts. And I mentioned that number, 12,834. Um, since March, uh, we've had 9,000 new subscribers to our business contacts. So we're really building a strong list, um, of business, uh, people, whether it be single owners to large corporations. Um, and we're, that back-and-forth communication that we've been working on developing for the last year, um, with the communications program, um, is really coming into action and we're thinking it'd be very effective. Um, communications and economic development, working together. Um, wanted to acknowledge Christina Ravela is our business liaison. She's been serving, um, she's our economic development coordinator, but she's serving on the incident management team, um, and really working to get the communications out to the business community. Um, another thing I wanted to mention, um, with the 74 communications emails that we've sent out, um, we have, uh, on average, a 32% engagement rate, um, which is pretty good. Uh, typically, you know, on a, a mass email, we get 12, 10%, sort of the average. So, um, people are engaged with our emails. Um, they are, uh, looking to us as a source for information. Um, we recently posted on our elsagundobusiness.com, um, and we also have El Segundo Back-to-Business. Um, the guidelines and protocols that the county is requiring so that, um, any business owner listening can go there um, and get instructions on, on how to safely reopen. And safely reopening is critical, um, because we do want to be cognizant that, you know, while the economy and, uh, small business owners and all business owners are, are struggling, we want to open safely and make sure that, um, you know, we can continue to reopen, um, and go through the roadmap, um, the recovery roadmap that the county and the state have outlined. Um, we're also doing posting on social media, posting on LinkedIn, um, YouTube videos. The incident management team has been working with El Segundo TV. Um, wanna, uh, recognize Darnell Jenkins, um, Stevie and Ryan and Robert Seidel, um, for their work on El Segundo TV. Um, and, uh, Sam Lee may want to jump in here as well to talk about the specifics. Um, well, maybe not the specifics, but kind of the update on where, um, we are with all the 35 applications. Um, but, um, we are moving forward with, uh, processing those as quickly as possible. And as I mentioned, some were processed over the weekend. Um, and then finally, uh, I just wanted to mention that we did a great, um, uh, business leader and elected officials roundtable. Um, and, uh, we are planning to launch that this week. Um, it's the, uh, leaders of our business community, some of the leaders, including Patrick Xinshong, Luke Robitaille, Kelly Cheeseman, Mike Mothner, uh, Shar Franklin from the Embassy Suites, Mirabatia from, uh, President of Textile Fashion Group. It's really a great cross-section from, uh, many different industries. Um, talking to the elected officials about, um, how they're coping with COVID-19. Um, Dr. Xinshong talks about vaccines and, and treatments and, um, we're going to launch that on Monday. So, um, that'll go out on our Facebook and our LinkedIn and be on our, uh, our city website as well. So that's, that's it for me. If Sam, if you want to say a few words or if you guys, if the council has any questions.
If you have a question, just raise your hand. Otherwise, we'll go on to Mr. Lee. I don't see any. Okay, Sam, you're up.
Yeah, sure. Um, I, I think, uh, Barbara said everything, um, very well. Um, but just to get back to the, um, the, you know, issuing temporary encroachment permits and temporary use permits, I wanted to give a limit, little more detail. Um, I think it all started off, uh, two weeks ago at the, um, council meeting when council gave us clear direction to staff to go and do, um, you know, find out what these businesses, um, need and want and, and create a team, a multi-departmental team to try to help them as, as, as much as we can. So, um, following that, uh, council meeting two weeks ago, uh, within two days, um, we developed a application that was, uh, was created online, went to all the businesses. And, um, we heard from them. They wanted to use, um, some sidewalk, uh, their personal parking space area and also the street and street parking areas. Um, following that Thursday, uh, the following Wednesday, uh, a multi-departmental team made up of fire, police, public works, planning and building got together, went through the applications of what the businesses, uh, wanted and needed and, uh, was preparing to, uh, come up with a, a plan to get them what they want. Um, we thought it was going to be a little bit more time, but, uh, two days after on Friday, uh, a new order was, um, was, uh, sent out from the county. So we, we had to stop everything that we're doing. And, um, um, several staff members of, uh, planning and public works came in on Saturday, uh, spent all day, um, reviewing the applications, creating a customized, um, new approach to issuing temporary, um, encroachment permits and temporary use permits. And of the 35, um, 30 applications were something that, uh, we can issue. So, uh, we reached out to, um, every one of those, uh, businesses and we, uh, were able to issue, uh, permits for 25 of the 30. Five others are, uh, we're working with them to, um, continue to give, give them the permit. Um, of the 35, five of the businesses have asked for some use of the street. Uh, either the, the, uh, public parking area or closing of the street. Um, um, we knew that to occur on Saturday, Sunday. The following Monday, uh, we got the, um, the multi-departmental team gathered again. Um, and we've been working, uh, throughout this week to, um, gather information. If we were to close some of the streets, uh, what will be the impact to, um, not only those businesses that want the street closed, but we, we started the, the conversation with the other businesses that may be impacted. So, um, with that, um, that is where we are today and we hope to get you an update, um, um, in the days to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Any questions from the council? There, um, I just, okay, sorry. So Sam, you were saying on the issue of the street with the five, they're looking for some kind of street use. That's coming back to a surely. Sorry, I missed that last part. You can just clarify.
Yeah, so we're, uh, you know, these businesses, um, that want to use, um, the sidewalks that's in front of their property, um, and businesses that want to utilize, um, their own parking spaces. We were able to issue permits for 25 of those 30 and we're working with the other five. And we wouldn't, we shouldn't have any problems issuing them, them permits. Five of the 35 have asked for use of, um, uh, pr- public parking spaces in front of their property as well as, uh, possibly closing down, um, some of the streets. So, uh, we are having a bigger, uh, multi-departmental meeting to discuss, um, safety concerns. And we're also reaching out to other businesses that will be impacted by the street closure. And, uh, we hope to get some, uh, information, maybe a survey and gather that data and information to, um, to understand what the, what the right, uh, next steps may be.
Got it. So of the, we asked, by the way, thank you, if you could thank the members of the staff on behalf of the council for coming in on the weekend too, to process all those. That's great. There's a couple of metrics we asked for in that five or six-point plan last council meeting. One was, how quickly can businesses open up once they're allowed? How quickly do businesses open up once their category of business is allowed to be open? And which of the businesses that could be open choose to be open? So it sounds like, I read the tea leaves, you're doing really well metric-wise in terms of the businesses that asked for use of their own private property and the permits were issued. That's great. But we're struggling a little bit, and maybe struggling is the wrong word, but with the ones where there's street involved. Is, so that's what we're saying, right? Pretty much?
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's, uh, maybe less of struggling, but, um, we want to make sure that, uh, all businesses are heard before we make a decision of, of closing, um, all of or part of the streets.
Okay, thanks. And I know, uh, a lot of cities have decided to do that following what's happened in Ventura and other places where they've created this really unique outside dining environment, given what's happened. Um, but I understand the concerns. Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Yeah. Uh, Councilmember Giroux.
Uh, yes, uh, thanks for the presentation, Sam. Appreciate it. Um, I think overall staff's done a great job. I mean, this has been unprecedented time and asking you to do things that we've never had to do. Um, I do want to just kind of reiterate though, and I know we've talked about it, that these ideas that we have for these street closures, I, I, I know we're going through a process and we have to go through a process and I understand that, but there's an urgency to this because there's a, there's a timeframe on it. Um, and we, we can't buzz past the timeframe of opportunity. Um, because if we wait too long or we do too many things in that direction, we're going to be in a situation where it's going to be too late to do it anyway. So I know we're working hard on it. I know we got the right people in place to do it. I have full confidence. But I do believe that we ought to prioritize that and, and figure out a way to get to yes. Um, it's never going to satisfy every piece of criteria, whether it be on what the businesses are asking for. Uh, but in the end, we really have to do whatever we can to make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Giroux. Anyone else?
I'm gonna, yeah, it's, I'm going to concur with, um, Councilmember Giroux. I, I think timing is of a, time is of an essence and I just, you know, we've, they've been reaching out to us for quite a while now. And I just want to make sure that, I know, Lee, you're, uh, Sam, your, your staff has been doing an amazing job. But if we could just expedite this process and move forward quickly, I think everyone will be very happy. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Purstuck. Looks like that's it on that item. All right, so now we have the administrative order. Mr. Hensley?
Yes, um, Mayor and Council, as part of the reopening of the restaurants, uh, the city manager had previously issued administrative order number one, um, back when this event, uh, happened. So it was, uh, I believe it was back on March 17th when the city manager issued an order which, uh, closed down the restaurants except for, um, takeout dining. So as part of the, uh, shift on, uh, last Friday where the governor and the county allowed, uh, cities in Los Angeles to, uh, start how, allowing for dine-in restauranting, restaurant at 60% capacity. The city manager amended that order to, uh, and now we will, we will rely on the county's orders as far as, and the state's order as far as the amount of, to the extent they're allowed to be open and how they have to operate, that that will, we, we will be deferring to the county. Uh, now, more specifically, the order also provides with, uh, staff with great latitude as far as issuing the temporary use permits, allowing, uh, parking sidewalks, et cetera, to be used as has been explained, to allow for more dining area to deal with the occupancy cap. Um, and it waves the normal, uh, fees associated with these permits. And so the council's being asked to ratify this administrative order number one, which is in your packet, um, which generally does what I just explained.
Okay, someone, someone like to move?
Motion would be appropriate.
Yeah, I'll, I'll move approval.
Giroux, second.
That was Boils for the first. That was Boils for the first, sorry. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Drew?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichol?
Aye.
Councilmember Prustak?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Pimentel?
Yes.
And Mayor Boils?
Yes.
Okay, so the administrator order passed five oh.
Mayor and council, there's also an item on for pro-sum agreement for technical support relating to COVID- nineteen response. And this is, the city manager has executed the agreement, which he has the authority to do, even though it's outside his normal financial authority or dollar limit, if you will. Because of the COVID emergency is allowed to enter this contract, but the council needs to ratify it. This is for providing additional information, technology, services regarding troubleshooting equipment for remote workers, configured distributing computing for the remote workers, and various other projects related to the incident management team where they need additional assistance with regard to IT assistance. And so that's, you're being asked to ratify that. If you want more detail from, on that matter, then you will, we'll need to have Randy Collins weigh in with more detail if you need that.
Does any council member need more detail? I'm seeing no from Mayor Protem. I do not. Mr. Nichol does not. Okay. Think we're good. So I'll I'll move approval of that one too. Boils?
Prustak, second.
Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Drew?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichol?
Aye.
Councilmember Prustak?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Pimentel?
Yes.
And Mayor Boils?
Yes.
You pass five oh.
Thank you. Mayor and council with the, that will conclude the items on the special council agenda and also conclude the special presentations on the regular agenda. And this will now bring you to the
Item A, I believe, right?
Item A and then on to the remainder of the items on the regular agenda.
Okay, item A, procedural motions, consideration of a motion to read all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda by title only, stating your last name. Do I have a motion to read all ordinances and resolutions by title only?
Nichols.
Okay, Scott. And Drew, so.
Okay, it's Councilman Nichol with the first and Council, Council, okay, either way.
You got it.
All right, Madam Clerk?
Sorry, Lance. Councilmember Drew, for your vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Nichol?
Aye.
Councilmember Prustak?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Pimentel?
Yes.
Mayor Boils?
Yes.
Okay, you pass five oh.
Thank you. Okay, on the consent calendar, and item five will be pulled. I'll need to recuse myself on that as it relates to property that I own. Are there any other pulls?
Not a pull. I was wondering if it's possible to pull item twelve up to be before council member reports?
Eh, I'm okay with that. Is anyone object? No objections? Okay, yes, let's see this. So that would be Lance right before.
Would you like to pull it after consent?
Yeah, let's just do it right after. You want to do it after consent, Lance? Let's do that.
Whatever works.
Okay, we'll do that. Great, thank you. All right, so, and it sounds like there are no more pulls, so item five, I'm going to excuse myself. And I'll turn it over to Mayor Protem Pimentel.
As long as there's not gonna be any discussion on item five, and the record can just note that you are, you've you've stated you have a a conflict interest, the record will note that you're abstaining on that. Unless someone wants to discuss that item, then you can just all vote on the entire consent calendar. It'll just be noted that you have a const, you have a conflict on that item.
Okay, thanks for clarifying. Would anyone like to discuss item five?
I move to approve items one through five. Nichol?
One through seven.
One through seven, Scott, right?
All right, one through seven.
That's okay, all right. Thank you. Councilmember Prustak, second. We'll call those.
Councilmember Drew?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichol?
Aye.
Councilmember Prustak?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Pimentel?
Yes.
And Mayor Boils?
Yes.
Okay, consent passes five oh with the exception of number five was just four of you.
Great, thank you. Okay, we're gonna move up item twelve, which is adopt a resolution to establish business license tax money-back guarantee refund program. Mr. Mitnik, who will report on this?
Don't think he's back in chamber yet.
Oh, is Barbara on still?
I'm here.
Oh, there she is. Great.
Mayor Boils, it was under your item, so you would be reporting on this.
Oh.
You want me to give a summary?
Well, okay, I do have a staff report, I believe. Yeah, could you give a summary, please? Thank you.
So at the last council meeting, Mayor Boils suggested that we establish a money-back guarantee business license refund program. And at the direction of council, we went back and and clarified what that program would entail. And taking the comments of council, had made a couple alterations to what was originally proposed. And the program before you this evening includes a limitation to businesses with ten or more employees and five thousand or more square feet of space in the city. It it addresses the issue that Councilmember Prustak brought up of maybe single LLCs, several companies operating out of one address, contractors coming in to just do some limited work in the city. And it allows for the program to really impact only those businesses that have a physical presence and a certain number of employees and square feet in the city. And then in addition to that, I think at the recommendation of Councilmember Drew, we added a sunset provision, which is January first of twenty twenty-three. And the program is, in summary, if a new business that's never been in El Segundo before, they enter into the city, they get a business license, they have one year from the date of issuance of that license to request a refund should they choose to leave the city. If they're not satisfied with with being a business in El Segundo, then they can request a ref, a full refund of their business license taxes paid for that year.
Thank you, Barbara. I couldn't have said it better myself. All right, Councilmember Drew, you want to move this up? So did you want to discuss it or ask questions?
Uh, no, actually, I I thought it was a good idea last time. I just wanted to see if we had put into the the new proposal the the things that we discussed, and it seems that we have done so. I believe that anything that we can do right now to help businesses, which we talked about earlier, and and continue to attract new businesses, especially during this climate, I think is a good idea. I think this is a a good gesture and and a good way to help continue to market the city.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any other questions, comments before we call? Yeah, so, Madam Clerk?
Can I just clarify for you all? On the script, it does state item number twelve, but that would be a clerical on my part. So it's really item number eleven for anyone following along.
Ah, thank you.
I was looking under tab twelve.
Okay.
And so the the request of council this evening is to adopt the resolution to establish the business license tax money-back guarantee refund program.
Okay. Any further comments, council? Yeah, Councilmember Prustak?
I just want to thank you, Barbara, for making those changes. I think it's important that we make sure that the, we're targeting the people we want to target for this refund. So I appreciate you making those changes and listening to the council.
Thank you, Councilmember Prustak. I agree. All right, any other comments, questions? Or shall we ask for a motion to approve?
Prustak?
Mark should probably read the resolution.
Oh, yes, thank you, thank you. Oh, that's two mistakes tonight. Sorry, Madam Clerk.
No mistakes.
Mark, you're up.
Yes, Mayor and council, a resolution of the El Segundo City Council establishing the business license tax money-back guarantee refund program is ready for adoption.
Okay, who would like to move approval or adoption?
Prustak, move forward.
I guess we're introducing, right? Or anything else?
This this is a resolution, so it is, it is just one action.
Okay, Prustak on the first.
I'll second. Pimentel?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Drew?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichol?
Aye.
Councilmember Prustak?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Pimentel?
Yes.
Mayor Boils?
Yes.
Resolution passes five oh.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, let's see, can I get back to? Now, we, I'm sorry, I'm following on multiple platforms here. So we are up to, I believe,
Number eight.
Number eight, yes. Continue public hearing and possible adoption of an ordinance amending El Segundo municipal code creating a pilot program to allow and regulate short-term rentals in cities residential zoning districts through a short-term rental permit process. So this will be continued to regular city council meeting of June sixteenth, twenty twenty. This is the time and place to continue the public hearing to June sixteenth, twenty twenty. Nothing further required on that, Mr. Hensley. Is that right?
You're good.
No, that's correct.
Thanks, Madam Clerk. All right. Item nine, conduct a public hearing regarding introduction of an ordinance adding a new chapter nine to Title Nine of El Segundo Municipal Code to establish comprehensive regulations, standards, and permit requirements for the installation of wireless communication facilities in the public right-of-way and related environmental assessment, EA eleven eighty-nine, and adopt a resolution adopting regulations for small wireless facilities in public right-of-way. This is a time and place heretofore fixed for a public hearing. City clerk, was proper notice of the hearing given in a timely manner?
Yes, it was.
Thank you. Has any written communication been received?
Yes, and you've, you you all have received it as well.
We have, thank you. Okay, and I see Mr. McLean on, so I'm assuming he'll be making the presentation?
Yes, Greg McLean, our planning manager, will make the presentation.
Clean-shaven McLean. Man, all right.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Mayor Protem and council. I'm gonna switch over to a screen share so that I can make a presentation on my, on my screen. So let's see if this works. Never done this before, so is everybody seeing what I see? Wireless antenna facilities in the public right-of-way? Excellent. Okay, so let's start with the background. In two thousand and eighteen, the Federal Communications Commission issued a ruling that clears the way for 5G technology. So I'll start by talking about 5G. 5G simply stands for fifth generation. So this will be the fifth generation of wireless technology. It's a, it's going to be revolutionary when it, when it fully rolls out. It's be a hundred times faster than what we have now, which is 4G. Bandwidth will be tremendously larger. It'll be able to handle the Internet of Things, which you hear about. That'll be really important because a lot of medical devices will be constantly communicating back to the home base or the, or the doctor or whatever. It'll also be able to communicate with autonomous vehicles. So there'll be a lot of, a lot more traffic going through, and it'll virtually eliminate lag. So this is, this is going to be pervasive. It's going to be very important that it gets a network that supports it. So this ruling, it creates a very short timeframe for a lot of the applications to be approved. As a matter of fact, it's far too short for our existing wireless regulations to possibly handle. And every city's basically finding this problem. So, and also, 5G requires much smaller antennas on much shorter poles. And as consequence, there's going to be a lot more of these poles everywhere. The wireless carriers are developing these poles in the right-of-way. In other words, on, next to public streets, on sidewalks, and parkways, and alleys. And they're doing that because they need so many of them. It's not, it's not feasible or it doesn't make financial sense for them to seek leases on private property. So some considerations we had when we were, when we were studying this. The exist, as I said, the existing city wireless regulations cannot possibly adopt or adapt to this fast enough. And the new sites being in the right-of-way, so we were looking at Title Nine of the municipal code instead of Title fifteen. Title fifteen, of course, is zoning, and this is all taking place in the streets and sidewalks. For one type of facility in particular, which is this small wireless facilities, and I'll get into all these details a little bit later. The rules change so frequently that special regulations are proposed outside of the municipal code. Excuse me, and these will be adopted by by resolution instead of ordinance because they change quickly. We anticipate changing them frequently, maybe as often as once or twice a year. And so we want to have them adopted by resolution so that the council can approve changes on a regular basis if needed. And then we want to do our utmost to ensure the least visibly intrusive facilities go into the most sensitive areas while not creating any real perceived obstacles to developing the 5G network. We certainly don't want to be the city that that doesn't have the most advanced wireless network. So the application process in its default form is really quite simple. Application is filed, it goes to the planning commission for a public hearing, and then it's approved. Or denied, of course. It can be conditioned. It runs just like any other planning commission approval. This is the default, this we don't expect to see too many of. I think that carriers are incentivized to avoid this process. But if they have a need for exceptions, if they have a need for special designs or anything, this is the process that they'll fall to. But there are shortcuts that they can take to to avoid this. And let me show you the first, I'm gonna call these off-ramps. These are the ministerial off-ramps, and these are special cases. So if they have an existing facility and they want to make minor modifications, that would be like swapping out antennas for similar antennas. Maybe they're more powerful or just maybe an inch taller or something like that. These are very small modifications. They're the the amount of variation is defined in the federal codes. That's a minor modification. It's called a, I forgot exactly what the word was, but these can be done over the counter, basically. Another thing is a, is a certain specified call locations, also defined in by the California Public Utilities Commission. These can be processed over the counter. So when these come in, we'll take care of them. We don't expect any of these initially, but over time, we'll probably get a lot of minor modifications. And eventually, that will probably be the majority of the of the applications we'll see. So these will be handled by the Public Works Department. Probably, as I said, over the counter, maybe a one or two-day process. The second set of off-ramps are the administrative off-ramps. There are two types. The first one is the administrative wireless permit. The second one is a small wireless facility, and that's the one we're going to concentrate on. But let me address the administrative wireless permit first. At the moment, there's very little difference between these. One follows the municipal code, and the other one follows the 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 regulations that we're going to ask you to adopt by by resolution. At the moment, there's no difference, really, but over time, they may change enough that that they will diverge. And so that's why we have the administrative wireless permit. We don't anticipate for the time being using that or getting applications for that. But over time, as as the regulations for small wireless change, it may, it may become used. From this point on, I'm going to concentrate on the small wireless facilities because that's what we expect the majority of our applications to be. Now, the small wireless facilities have their own regulations, and that's going to feature a few things in the design standards. So I'm gonna go over the basic elements of the design standards. Generally, though, we're limited to holding these small wireless facilities to basically the same design standards that we do to other utilities within the public right-of-way. But we're allowed to discuss or and regulate to some extent location, but it's more of a preference than it is a standard. And heightened design, we do, we do require that antennas are shrouded, covered, and cylinders are otherwise hidden to some degree. There are equipment preferences. Now, the radio, the radios and and the connection to the power and so forth, our first preference is that they be hidden inside the poles. And remember, these are And remember, these are much smaller than the old equipment or the old towers, so that can be done. Uh, second preference is that they put it underground. And third is on the pole. Um, usually, I think fifteen to twenty feet up is, is the ideal. And lastly is, um, on a pedestal in the ground, on the ground, I mean. And then there are other standards that deal with utility connections, landscaping, signs, et cetera, plus details on all of the above things. The second set are location sta- preferences. So I'm gonna go through this. We're gonna talk about the commercial and industrial ones first. So major arterials. The preferred locations in the commercial industrials are gonna be on the major arterials, and that would be, um, PCH, El Segundo, Rose Crowns Aviation. Second preference will be the secondary arterials, and there's a lot of them, I'm not gonna name them. Third would be on the collector streets. There's only one, and if you can't exactly see it, it's right here. It's the center street, just for two blocks, it's Smokey Hollow. And after that, of the local streets, now I'm not showing you them, but that's everything else in the three-quarters of the city that are not residential. Then I'm gonna skip down to the eighth and the last preferred location because it applies both to commercial and residential, and that is within two hundred and fifty feet of a residential structure. So even though the arterials and the secondary arterials are the preferred, they're also the least preferred if they're within two hundred and fifty feet of residential. Now, that doesn't mean that these are not going to be located in residential. I'm going to be straightforward, they are, absolutely. Uh, but in terms of preferential location, this is the sequence. So I'm gonna go now to the residential portion. So this is the residential part of the city. The first priority will be major arterials, but presently, there are no major arterials in the residential section, so we're not gonna see that yet. Um, I don't anticipate major arterials invading the residential section. I do perceive that we may someday see residential abutting, um, major arterials. And I say that because we have the, um, Pacific Coast Commons Project as one potential, and there may be some encroachment near, um, near El Segundo Boulevard in the future, just in case we have it in here. The next one is secondary arterials, and that would be Imperial Avenue and also, um, Grand Avenue. And then after that, are the collector streets, Mariposa and Central. And then after that, we are on number eight again, which is the least preferred, but uh, obviously, within the residential district, everything's within two hundred feet of a house or apartment. So after the, um, the residential, uh, preferences, we're gonna talk about the structural preferences. The first preference is existing or replacement light poles. I wanna show you an example of what, what type of thing we're going to see. It's not the best example, but this is the best one I could find of an actual site as opposed to a, um, a sort of a mock-up. Our simulation. The antennas are, of course, here. See if I can, oh, wrong one. I went too far. This is the antenna. And this is not a very good example because if you look very carefully, you can see exposed wires here. We would never allow that in El Segundo. But I, this is, um, actually not bad, but this is not even qualified under the regulations that we're proposing. We would probably have a cylinder completely hiding the antennas above right here. The equipment is underground here. That would be consistent with our guidelines. This would be appropriate in any zone. The second preference is existing or replacement wood poles. We do not expect anyone to replace a wood pole, it's prohibitively expensive. So on an existing wood pole would be like this. There's the antenna, there's the equipment. Um, we expect to see this in Smokey Hollow. We expect to see this in, um, any place where there's a wood pole already. You may think that this is, um, not very attractive, but I ask if, uh, if any of you have noticed this, it's, it's actually on the, um, El Segundo Boulevard at the corner of Sheldon. And if you have seen it, when did you first notice it? Because, um, you might be surprised how long that's been there. Third preference is non-replacement street poles. So that would be the first picture, again, only better, um, where there wasn't a light pole previously. The fourth preference would be new, non-replacement poles. So these would just be new poles. Here's an example. What I wanted to point out here is the equipment is hidden inside the pole, right at the bottom here. And here's another example. Uh, this is a much taller pole, and I think that there may be two sets of antennas for two carriers in there, and the equipment appears to be in the box on the ground, uh, next to it. The last preference is an interesting one. I, um, I don't know if, if we could allow this, uh, the, the way the guidelines are set up now. This is strand-mounted, so this would be suspended from a wire. I did find a picture of one in Torrance, and it looks like this. It may actually work in some certain locations, certain parts of, uh, Smokey Hollow or in alleys. I don't know. It, it doesn't work according to our, our current, um, draft of the regulations, but it's something that we might want to consider because this is rather small. And, um, everything is contained right here, right here. So that's, that's something we may want to consider in the future. I just wanted to throw it out there to show you what it looks like. So those are, those are the structure preferences, and the height is also discussed in this section. And it's, uh, if there's an existing pole, a lot of it is gonna be controlled by how tall the pole is existing. You can get slightly more height. If it's a new pole, it's controlled by the zone. So then, um, that brings me to the AT&T letter that you all received. I wanted to address, uh, the points that were brought up. There were five points. The first point was the, the definition of technically, um, infeasible. Eight, before I go there, though, I wanted to also inform you that AT&T and, and our office have been in contact for, uh, on a regular basis for over a year. Um, we've been working with them, they've been exceptionally patient, and we've been, um, in contact more or less consistently over the course of the year. It's, it's been a pleasure working with them because they've, they've been, um, they've been helping proofread our, our drafts, and, um, it's been a great relationship. I, I really appreciate how they've helped. And I think that that feeling is mutual. So, but I did want to address these, these five points. Uh, the technical infeasibility is a sticking point, and that is that the city is going by the basic definition from the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals. And so we just don't agree on that one. They're going by the FCC definition, we're going by Ninth Circuit Court. We just don't agree. And I think that they're, um, probably going to accept that. On the second point, um, it's a definite, it revolves around, um, an inconsistency on, on how we, um, are d- defining small wireless facilities. We've asked them for clarification. I expected a response today, but they couldn't organize, um, their response fast enough. So we'll work with them over the next couple of weeks to sort that out. The third one is they, they made some suggestion for language. I wanted to show you that in the draft, the final draft that you have, we've incorporated their language. We've accepted it, um, everything's good there, and they appreciate that. The fourth one, same thing, they've suggested language. We incorporated the language into the final draft, and it's in the draft that you have to approve. The fifth one, we didn't accept their language. We proposed alternative language. It's in the final draft. Um, I haven't heard from them if they accept that. We hope they do, and, um, we'll hear from them in the next couple of weeks, hopefully, and hopefully, we can come to a conclusion on that. So that, um, concludes the presentation, and I'll, I guess I'm, if I could figure out how to stop the share, oh, there it is. Okay. I guess I'm available for questions if you have any.
Any questions for Mr. McLean? Councilman Nichol.
Mr. McLean, was anything brought up at the planning commission level on this item when they heard it?
The, you know, it's interesting, the, the planning commission, um, dealt with this many months ago, and it was a very different ordnance. We didn't have the, uh, the, uh, regulations for small cells at the time. And at that time, a lot of this was being handled in the Title fifteen, but since then, we've stripped all of that out. So the planning commission didn't see this version because there's nothing in Title fifteen.
Today, but in their conversation regarding, say, Title fifteen, but this is Title nine, were they concerned about how invasive these antennas might be in the residential zone?
I, I, I believe they were, but they understood the need for these, and, um, they liked the direction that we were going with this. And that's my recollection, I'm, you have to forgive me, it was quite a while ago. I mean, it was, it was, it was the, uh, early fall of two thousand nineteen or something.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Councilman Nichol. Uh, Council, yeah, Mayor Protem Pimentel. Can't hear you, Chris, can't hear you.
Can you, can you hear me better now? How about that? Uh, I, I apologize a bit, Greg, I think this is you somewhat of a disservice. Gi- given the events that have transpired, uh, we haven't been able to interrogate you a bit before, uh, the meeting here on, on some of this. And, and I know that personally, and I, and I hope the city attorney's still here, I, I have a bit of confusion about what, uh, our jurisdiction is on this. Uh, I think it's been litigated in several different cer- different circuit courts about the FCC preemption on this and, and what ability we once had versus what we now have to decide where we want these. So I think that, that my first question is, is, M- Mark, do you feel comfortable, city attorney, do you feel comfortable giving us a bit of a, of a historical refresher about what we could control when it comes to tower wireless devices before, uh, the FCC ruling in two thousand and eighteen? Do we have the ability to, to dictate terms on those previously?
Uh, it has been a, um, slow but constant erosion of local rights as it relates to, um, it first started with the cable television, and, um, they were sort of the first, uh, if you will, electronic communications out there that weren't happening through television, and they morphed into voice-over Internet protocols and, uh, into the Internet. And so, uh, they, uh, the FCC, the federal, the, the US Congress, the state, they slowly eroded away with that as we, as we saw the wireless facilities, uh, coming in. They, uh, have eroded away, again, the local control over those to where, by and large, it is now a, a ministerial act by local government. There is some, uh, depending on, with some of the larger facilities, we have, uh, a very limited ability to, um, question where those go, um, because we have to be able to show that, uh, there's another location that would serve the same service area as well, and we have to be able to prove that they can actually get access to that property. And so that, those are, those are really difficult to do, and there's a, we call it a shot clock, uh, with those of us that are dealing with it at the staff level, is we literally have between, uh, it's a very short period of time, sixty to ninety days, depending on circumstances. And with these small wireless facilities, uh, all of the rules have to be there in advance that we're going to implement, and those rules, uh, cannot be very restrictive. And, and what, um, particularly on the aesthetic side, they all have to be in place in advance. And, uh, and, and as, uh, Mr. McLean explained, one of the reasons for having these, if you will, eight different, uh, potential locations is if they cannot get the coverage, if the carrier cannot get the coverage, uh, let's say, you know, if in a perfect world, everything would go into, uh, you know, category one on, on, on the major streets. Well, if that doesn't really provide the coverage they need, then they have to go into these lower levels, and it's anticipated they will need to go into, you know, Greg could probably speak to this better than I do, but I, I would suspect there'll be some facilities in the, the residential areas if they can show that they just can't get the coverage that they need.
Absolutely.
We won't be able to prohibit that. We can, you know, again, if they can show that they need those areas, then we're gonna have to allow them to put it in. So, um, I hope that answered your question. It's, we have very little regulatory power at this point in time, and the best way that we can exercise it is to put these rules in a place, put everyone on notice of what our rules are, and to have the rules ready for staff because these things have to be, uh, processed very quickly and issued very quickly.
Didn't, in, in, I, I may be remembering this or conflating a few issues, but even four years ago, wasn't this rule put in and then reversed, then re-emplaced, and then litigated? I mean, is there a sense this may change? It, or is this, or do we see that the, in, in your view, that this is the, the, the unrelenting wheel of progress?
Um, there was a prior version of this, um, and actually, the state had a version out. I, I don't remember the exact year where they were going to actually push these into our parks in different places, and we weren't gonna have any say over those. This is actually a little less onerous in some ways, um, with regard to that, but it's, I mean, really, it goes back to the nineteen ninety-six Telecommunications Act, where the feds came in and just said, "Look, um, we're gonna take away a lot of local control." And then the state has jumped in with, uh, various legislation through the years, and what we've seen is over the course of about twenty-five years, almost all of the rights of cities to take away, uh, or to regulate this. And to answer your question, we anticipate seeing, uh, more litigation over these issues. Um, there are, you know, still areas where there's some skirmishing going on. And we would expect that the FCC and Congress will weigh in as necessary. And the, the expectation that I have watching this is that if local government, um, slows down too much or keeps these out, that we'll see, uh, more erosion of that control. That the, the federal government and the state government are going to make sure these facilities exist.
I, I note that we are, so if I, if I read this correctly, we are, we are preempted in our discretion by both federal law and state law. So there's not much we can do in that regard. And right now, we are just, we, we are, we are haggling over the decorative elements and the prioritization of where they go.
That's correct, and we're trying to give the staff, um, the roadmap to implement these, uh, and, and to give the, the wireless carriers the roadmap, because if we don't have it in advance for them to see, then that puts us in a, um, we, we won't have the ability to regulate it at all. I mean, our regulations are very limited. If we don't have them out in advance for them to see, particularly on aesthetics, um, we won't be able to do anything.
Well, I think in, in a practical term, the idea that this could be a, a somewhat of a magic bullet for, for some players, like Smokey Hollow that are underserved by, by, uh, high-speed Internet is, is pretty attractive. On the other end, given the density of bandwidth that you need with it, the idea that all of our neighborhood could, hoods could be hives of, of five G antennas, uh, probably has some justifiable concern with some people. Uh, it doesn't sound like there's, there's m- m- much we could do in that regard. I, I mean, look, I don't want to be holding up something in the middle of a riot that's, that's talking about technology pieces, but, uh, I mean, I have some concerns that we are, are, are we capitulating before we have anything to, uh, to fight for here? That we, are we capitulating without a fight on something that's of importance to us? It, it would, it, it sort of seems that way, or are we at best shaping what limited part of this that we could shape?
Well, I'll, I'll let Greg way, McLean, win on this, but I actually think that this will provide more order, um, and direction for staff to implement this. I, I think without this, it'll be sort of chaotic as we get all of these requests, and we will, again, we will be unable to really impose any aesthetics, uh, requirements on them. And, and if we don't have our roadmap of here are our priorities, that will also put us in jeopardy. So I, I, I believe this is actually, um, well, I'm not saying it's a, um, I, I understand people are not happy with, um, necessarily having all these facilities. I know there are people that are concerned about, um, the electromagnetic fields that, uh, some people feel that these, that these put out. Um, they've made it very clear at the court system and at the federal level that we cannot even take that into account. So from my perspective, I believe this is gonna be helpful to the city. I don't think, there will be people that don't like the facilities, but I think not having the regulations in place will be worse as far as protecting the city. But again, Greg, McLean, I'd like to hear your, your thoughts on that because at the staff level, they're, they're the ones that really have to implement this.
I agree with that entirely. Without these regulations, uh, we could, we could see everybody just come in. with, you know, slapping these things on the sides of all the light standards. We wouldn't have any control over it. They could be exposed antennas all over the place. At least, uh, when they're hidden in a cylinder that's approximately the same diameter as the pole, that, that helps. You, you know, eventually you become, um, unable to see these things after a while. And that's, that's helpful. When you're constantly seeing them everywhere, it's a constant reminder of how, how, you know, how invasive they are. But when they're hidden to some extent, any extent at all, it's better. So the other thing is, um, you know, we can control the height to, to a certain extent. And if we, if we, uh, if we didn't, they, they could be fifty feet high. That's the, the federal definition of how high they can be. Um, that's important, I think. We also can certainly prioritize that they be on existing poles wherever possible. Otherwise they could just slap a pole in the ground, no purpose other than to hold their, their antennas. So there's a lot more to it than just, um, you know, just rolling over and accepting it. I think that the design guidelines are, are really important. I mean, we can't say no to, to the build out of the network, but we can certainly control how they're going to look.
Do we have any, any ability to, is there any appellate remediation piece? If, if they say, look, we, for, for coverage, we need to put this in and it's right in the middle of, of your kindergarten. Is there, do we have any ability to, to appeal to, to the, who to appeal to? The FCC? Who, who is the body of, 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 of decision on that?
Well, first of all, this suddenly applies to those on the right of way. So unless there's a street or an alley running right through the middle of the kindergarten, it's not gonna happen.
Let's say, let's say it's on the right of way that's right next to the kindergarten.
Well, the FCC is, um, if it's one of their regulations, then it, it will have to. They, the, the appeals start with them. They are subject to court review. So that is generally the process.
And is that something that is, is, that residents do? Or is that something that the city, is that something that, that's, that's, uh, started by our planning department? Are they the body to make that appeal?
Well, first of all, it, it's, uh, it's gonna be the public works department that handles these. These will be administrative. Yeah. Um, but every, they are appealable. There are procedures for appeal and it gets appealed to the planning commission. And all the appeals are public, public hearings. So, um, there are, there are some mechanisms for appealing these things. It's, it's not great, but it's there.
And they have to happen very quickly.
Very quickly.
Those are great questions, Mayor Protem. I, I got some too.
I, I, I have no more. I have no more. I will, I will, I will color with the comment that in, in the current climate, I, I, I feel, uh, uh, remarkably unprepared to make an intelligent comment on this, but I thank you very, for answering my questions.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I, I got a couple of questions. One is, Mr. McLean, so the existing technology, the hardware that's already in place throughout our city, are there any requirements, if it's the same telecom provider, to remove any existing? Are they using that for redundancy purposes?
Um, no, they're, they're, um, the existing tower, our towers and poles and whatnot are, are operating the, basically the four G network. Um, most of those were on private property or in Edison easements or even on city property. And those were all approved through the, um, existing process that we have through, uh, actually, I don't remember what the process is. I think it's a AUP or CUP depending on the circumstances. Almost all of those will have a condition that when they're no longer needed, they have to be removed. So if, if the networks, um, transition, transition over entirely to a five G and those sites are not needed, then they will be removed. If on the other hand, they transition to a five G, then they'll be transformed into five G. So the antennas will be made considerably smaller. They'll probably be lowered. And that would be done through a modification process. And there's a parallel process to what we're seeing today that occurs on the other side, which is, uh, you know, the private property side where it would come in as a minor modification. And if the antennas are smaller and lower and, you know, I would be able to approve those through a, um, over the counter permit process.
Is it reasonable to, okay, thanks. Is it reasonable to expect that the telecom providers would wanna make use of the assets they already have, these poles with the four G and convert those or, or no?
Yeah, it would be reasonable. And the reason I say that is because, as I mentioned in my presentation, there are going to be a lot more poles and if, and if they, um, find that one of their old poles is just right where they need one, of course they're gonna use it. Now, likely they would tear out the old pole because it's probably too tall. And it doesn't make sense to mount the, the, the new brackets, you know, halfway up or actually a third of the way up. They would probably just remove that pole and put the new pole, which would be much smaller, on the same property. That would be likely. Or they could, they could terminate the lease and, and not have to pay that landlord anymore and find the nearest telephone pole or something. That's more likely, I think.
And how do they, how do they go about securing those locations? Are these all private transactions? So they have to go through the right of way process with us, with this ministerial permit process? If I wanna use a utility company, how do I?
They, they have what they call joint pole authorities, um, mostly. There's agreements. This, it started like, uh, like Mr. Hensley said, uh, with the cable companies. So they have these, uh, these arrangements where they are sharing rights to poles. So just like the cable companies came in on the telephone company poles, these, uh, these companies can do that as well.
Do they, and do they ever share the same hardware or is it all unique hardware? Like, does T-Mobile have different hardware than Verizon? Five G hardware, that is.
No, they have their own.
And how many, is there, is there a limit on how many telecom providers can kind of proliferate the town with hardware?
No. Um, the only thing that I've ever seen them share are, are poles themselves. So if they, um, so for example, if they mount on a pole with the, with all of the wire or cables, if you will, going through the center of the pole, they can all go through the same pole. But they'll mount at different heights.
So there could be eight different telecom providers with five G hardware throughout town?
Realistically, four probably, but.
There could, I mean, if, if the FCC continues to prevent antitrust stuff and lets people split off and and hardware gets cheaper, et cetera, I mean, there could be more, right?
There could, there could be, but the, the probability of all of them being on the same pole is probably small.
Okay, I, I just wanna touch on the health risk concern, concerns. While I know we can't do anything about that, what are the health risk concerns? Is there a directional bias? Like, is it that we want, you know, what are the health risk concerns associated with five G from an EMF standpoint?
Honestly, I, I really can't speak to that.
Mark, do you know?
I have read, uh, numerous reports through the years. This issue's been around, um, for a couple of decades or longer since the, um, again, going back to the cable companies and these wireless facilities. And, um, there are reports that, um, believe this is a problem. But the courts and the FCC has said that there's absolutely nothing that, uh, we can do to regulate based upon EMFs.
Are we going to be publishing where these locations are? So if residents wanted to make their own informed decision about not letting their kid play, cause they, cause I've heard from residents that are very concerned about EMF. So, um, are we going to be publishing where these locations are?
Uh, well, they'll be a matter of public record.
I know. I, I don't mean though, that you have to go scour through the public records, Mark. I'm saying, are we gonna make a concerted effort to tell our residents and businesses where they are?
Right. Um, well, we, we could. Now, I would also note that EMFs are not just a, um, a wireless facility issue, that the, the power lines, the Edison power lines, they actually, I think that that was where the, um, the initial, at least from my reading of EMF issues, were the big green belts with Edison and their power lines with concerns from those. And, uh, it's the same concerns that we're seeing with the wireless. So i- i- if you were to put a map together with all of those various EMF emitters, if you will, oh, I, I don't wanna speak for public works or planning. It, it could end up being that, that they're virtually everywhere. I go. There may be very few spots that wouldn't be subject to some EMF output.
Okay.
But I, I think a public, I, I, that's, that's like an answer.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. McLean or Mr. Hensley? I don't see any. Okay. All right, um, we need to introduce this. Is that right, Mark?
Yes, there is an ordinance, uh, to introduce and then a resolution for adoption. And the ordinance, uh, it's an ordinance of the city of El Segundo adopting a new chapter nine entitled Wireless Communications Facilities in the public right of way to title nine of the El Segundo municipal code to establish comprehensive regulations, standards and permit requirements for the installation of wireless communication facilities in the public right of way is ready for introduction.
And Mark, I think I need to close the public hearing first. Thank you. All right. I'd like, uh, can I make, have a motion to close public hearing?
Nicol is so moved.
Thank you. Uh, Boyle second. Beat you for punch, Chris. Sorry. Okay, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Jeru.
Aye.
Councilmember Nicol.
Aye.
Councilmember first sec.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Pimentel?
Yes.
Mayor Boils.
Yes.
All right, you're closed, five oh.
Great.
Next will be a resolution of the city of El Segundo adopting regulations and standards for small wireless facilities in the public right of way. This is ready for adoption.
Okay. I would like to move adoption. Boils?
Jeru's second.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Jeru.
Yes.
Councilmember Nicol.
Aye.
Councilmember first sec.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Pimentel?
Yes.
Mayor Boils.
Yes.
Okay, five oh, resolution passes.
Mr. Mitnik, Matt, Matt throw a, a quick request on there that, that as these installations go in, is there a way that we can explore capturing that on the webpage so people have questions? And they will have questions about where the locations go that, that it's like we have maps that show them what the different zoning plans are, that, that there are things that, that will allow them to layer on where these things go in. Cause there's, there's certainly a lot of questions, uh, that we get from residents and I think it's worth having answers for.
I absolutely concur. Uh, we'll follow up and, um, make that happen. Great. All right. Thanks, Mayor Protem. Thanks, Mr. Mitnik. Let's go to, I think we're up to item ten. Is that correct? Presentation of investment portfolio report?
You need to introduce the ordinance, please.
Oh, okay. I thought we did.
I, wait, I.
Yeah.
I did read the ordinance.
Oh, I'm sorry. Then who introduced it? Or who, yeah, who, who introduced it?
I think Mark did, but I don't think that counts. I will introduce the ordinance.
It'll be brought back on June sixteen.
Okay, great. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Appreciate the clarification. Item ten. Presentation of investment portfolio report from March twenty twenty. Matt Robinson, our city treasurer. Thanks for being here.
Hello, everybody. Um, so I'm going to share my screen. Um, bear with me here. Hopefully, everything works the way it should. Can we see it or no?
Not yet.
Can we see it?
Not yet, Matt.
Not yet.
Okay, I'm gonna try this.
There you go.
All right. There we go. Are we good? Okay, um, so, uh, this is obviously our, our quarterly presentation of, of a snapshot of the portfolio. Uh, in this case, this is the first quarter, the end of March. So, uh, this is the actual snapshot. Um, now, I will mention that although I've been part of the investment advisory committee, that, uh, and so I'm, I'm aware of what's going on. This was before I essentially was elected. So this is a lot of the things that I can't take credit for. They're very good things for the most part. Um, so, uh, more or less, this is the snapshot. Uh, you can see kind of, you know, the majority uh, of our assets here is in this reserve portfolio. It consists of, uh, government agencies, municipal bonds and, uh, and whatnot. And you can see that the overall yield of that, the, that reserve portfolio is somewhere around two point two two percent at the end of the year. Um, weighted average maturity is about two and a half years, uh, with the supras kind of being the more short term in that bucket. And as, as of the end of the, uh, uh, March, we had, in, in terms of the liquidity portfolio, uh, we had about two million in camp, which is a very small portion of our assets. And those have since moved on to Leif, which, uh, uh, I think we'll get into a little bit later. Um, we have a decent chunk of money in Leif, which, um, uh, is yielding pretty well continually, uh, despite rates going down quite a bit. Um, and the overall portfolio value is a little north of a hundred million dollars. You'll note that the market value is a little bit higher than the, uh, cost. Um, and that's because rates have gone down, um, pretty much all year. But again, this is just at the end of March. Uh, the overall portfolio yield is about two percent. Uh, moving on to the next slide, uh, we have the interest income. So, uh, the first quarter yielded about one point seven percent. You know, it's a little bit jumpy in terms of the interest received because a lot of bonds pay, pay semi, semi-annually or quarterly. Um, Leif is kind of a, a big chunk of the assets that we have and that, that pays quarterly as well. Um, but one and a half percent, or sorry, one point seven percent, uh, interest for that period. Uh, looking at, uh, the compliance of the portfolio, so, um, we're a little bit different than the actual, uh, CD IAC guidelines. We're a little bit more restrictive in certain areas. Uh, but I think that the main thing to note here is, uh, everything is, is in compliance. Uh, we're kind of close on our negotiable CDs. Uh, twenty-four percent, our maximum is thirty. And then, uh, the other thing is the Leif fund, which again, has a lot of, uh, where a lot of our investments are. Um, there's a seventy-five million dollar max in that and we're nowhere near that. Um, but that's just something to note. Uh, so this is some additional compliance that was introduced, uh, now that we've been investing in medium-term notes. Uh, one of the, um, stipulations is that we don't hold more than three percent of the portfolio in, in any one issuer. Um, and the other thing is that, uh, at time of purchase, all of the, uh, ratings should be A or better. Um, and you can see that, um, more or less every, every single investment here has an A or better rating. Uh, we have had, I think, one or two drop in rating, uh, which isn't a big concern to us because we're holding a maturity for the most part. Um, and that's kind of obviously why the market value would decrease or e- or increase. But, uh, more or less holding maturity. Now, the other thing to mention is that, uh, JPAP, uh, investment down on the bottom. Uh, again, that, that went away or is going away, uh, due to a pretty substantial drop in the yield that that was providing. Uh, in terms of our commitment to continuing education, um, that about, uh, the requirement is, is five hours a year. Um, I'm obviously kind of new and, and need to catch up on this. Um, and, uh, most of the, uh, actual conferences that we would typically go to have been shut down for the year. So, uh, Dino and Latonya have been doing some webinars, uh, thus far this year. Latonya more than Dino at this point, but, um, more or less obviously hope to, to kind of take part in some webinars, I guess, by the end of the year because, uh, again, those conferences have been canceled. Uh, in terms of the asset allocation, this is just another, another, uh, view of kind of what you've already seen. Just maybe helps you to, to visualize, um, where all of the assets are. Again, kind of the big, the big chunks are Leif and CDs. Uh, we do have some, I'll mention it now, some, some funding in Leif that's, that's earmarked, uh, for specific causes. Uh, that is literally untouchable by us. But, um, again, uh, we're holding it, we, we're holding about eight and a half million cash, um, at the end of the quarter and that obviously can fluctuate. We've since moved a bunch of that into Leif as well because that's essentially our, our highest yielding investment at this point. And it's, uh, very safe and high liquidity. Uh, so this is the maturity schedule of, of, of the portfolio. So again, um, you know, Krista and Dino and the rest of the treasury team has done a pretty good job at, at laddering out, um, all of these, uh, the investments that we have. So, you know, if you add up all the less than one year, that pretty much equals, you know, the two-year, the three-year, the four-year, the five-year maturities, which is one of the reasons that we've had the yield that we've had and, and the environment that, that we've been in. Um, which again, is something that I think I'll get into in a little bit, is, is, is the environment that we're in. But. Um but uh this is kind of a visualization of of the laddering that we have going on. Uh I added a few slides here, and um for future reference, I I probably will do a lot a lot more thing uh changes going forward in terms of the visualizations and and what I'm presenting here. Uh but here are some of the particulars of the Leif, uh which is kind of a black box for a lot of people. Uh I just thought it was worth to worth digging into a little bit more, because you know, although you know, you look at the portfolio and you think we don't have any treasury exposure, uh you can see that fifty percent of the Leif uh or the the PMIA, which is the fund that or the pool that Leif is invested in, um is treasuries. Um and another big chunk of it is in in agencies and certificates of deposit. Um and one of the kind of interesting things about Leif is that, as I mentioned, it's it is one of the higher yielding options that we have right now. Um and uh just kind of show you, you know, what's going on in terms of the yield through time. Um you can see that the Fed funds rate has obviously dropped off a cliff at the beginning of year. Uh the PMI PMIA, which is what Leif is invested in, has stayed pretty steady. Um and uh you can see that the market value of that has also increased in the in the graphic beneath that. Um and that's because rates have been going down. Um and the reason for that is that the the PMIA, uh the weighted average maturity of that is about two hundred days or a little over uh six months. Uh yeah, a little over six months. So there's like a a six month lag uh in in the returns to that. So you know, we've seen those rates um basically continually drop by about a basis point a day. But the thing that's very interesting about about that investment is that they give you essentially the average yield for that quarter. So despite the fact that um you know, rates have been dropping off a cliff, you're essentially allowed to buy into a higher yield rate. Um and for that reason, um you know, since since I was elected, we we really haven't invested any more CDs or agencies, I guess, directly. It's been more so through this Leif uh vehicle. Um because essentially, we're being allowed to buy in at at, you know, rates from a quarter ago. Um and so right now, the rate for Leif, like the daily rate is about one point three percent. And again, uh there's nothing near that uh on the market in terms of fixed income. Uh looking at the treasury yield curve, just to show you uh what the environment looks like. Uh back at the end of two thousand nineteen, uh we had rates, you know, up about one and a half percent, a pretty flat uh yield curve or or lack of curve, actually. Um and obviously, since then, at the end of March, and then currently, uh rates are just about zero. Um so even if you go up five years, the best you're gonna get is thirty four, thirty five basis points uh on treasuries. Uh so it's not a very attractive environment for investing new money. And you know, uh not only is Leif a better vehicle, but this is probably a good time to 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 keep things very liquid and to to shore up our 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 uh investments in terms of, you know, if there's any unexpected expenses due to, you know, COVID nineteen uh that we stay very liquid. It's kind of a uh, you know, kill two birds with one stone situation for why we're we're throwing money into Leif. Uh here is another kind of table visualization of end of quarter treasury yields. You can kind of see how the the curve is changing. Uh one thing uh that I think is interesting to note here is that in two thousand nineteen, uh quarters one through three, uh you can see that the uh the yield on the on treasuries has gone, or goes down as you go further out in the yield curve. Uh and what this means is that the curve is inverted. I know we've kind of mentioned this before, but that, you know, through that period, that the yield the yield curve was inverted. And what that typically signals is a recession at some point in the future. And a recession being uh, you know, generally defined, even though not necessarily beholden to the rule of two consecutive uh quarters of uh GDP contraction. Um it it's very likely that that's gonna be the case, considering Q two was negative and considering Q two only had about a month of uh COVID COVID related problems. Uh and really, you know, the majority of that was in April or the repercussions there. Uh and kind of speaking a little bit more to that, um here is a a graphic from uh the Federal Reserve Bank of St. Louis. Uh this basically shows the treasury yield spread through time. Um and uh you can see those gray periods are recessions. Uh the the um blue series is the ten year treasury minus the three year treasury. So this what was typically a definition of a treasury yield spread. Uh and you can see that, you know, within a year after uh the the treasury yield spread goes negative, uh you know, in the past, that has generally indicated that we're going to be in a recession. Um and recession is obviously just a label. Uh you know, that's just something that that people define. It doesn't make things better or worse. And typically, recession is, uh you know, by the time we know we know we're in a recession, or by the time uh the Fed comes out and says that we're in a recession, uh we're already out of it because of that lag. Um and just to kind of, uh I guess, give you an idea of of what's going on at the Fed and kind of what what the maybe some of you have seen interviews with Jerome Powell. Um but more or less, one of the things that kind of got the equity market going was him saying that uh the Fed's not gonna run out of ammunition and that they can keep pumping the the market with with liquidity and 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 keeping borrowing low and um essentially propping up the market. Um and uh when asked about negative yields, which is is kind of one of the reasons why uh I think that we should kind of stay in the the Leif type vehicles for now and and not really going out too far in terms of maturities on the the issues that we purchase, uh is because I don't think that uh we're necessarily gonna go into negative rates, at least based on what Jerome Powell has or the chairman has has said about uh negative rates and what he thinks about them. So although it's possible, um I I find it hard to believe that that um that we're not in a better shape or in better shape by waiting and and um and just kind of investing in very, very short term vehicles, especially ones that yield as well as as Leif. And so at this point, I'm gonna pass this to Dino, uh especially because uh he was the one doing all the buying in the first quarter when I was uh a mere member of the investment advisory committee.
Thank you, Matt. So as you saw earlier with Matt's slide, how the treasury uh yields dropped significantly between December thirty first and uh March thirty first. We did make a a few purchases. We tried to get in there before yields dropped too much. Um and some of these investments that we made uh were basically proactive maneuvers to some uh bonds that we thought would be called, and as a matter of fact, were called. So we got in there with the higher rates while we still had a chance. Uh but then, as Matt said, things really, the bottom dropped out, and I agree with Matt with the using uh Leif right now. So looking at the cash flow, and this goes thirteen months, as was requested before. And you can see how January, February, March, we had a great buildup of cash, total receipts in excess of dispersments. But then you can all see also see when you start looking at June through November of last year, how uh the dispersments will exceed the receipts. So that's part of the liquidity that we're keeping. Uh and this just shows the net change, and you can see a lot of that Leif will be um spent coming up in uh July with our big CalPERS pension payment and our insurance payments. So the activity during that period, uh basically, the sum of it is about two point seven million in purchases. And we had a almost a million and a half of investments called. Um like I said, that was part of the reason we bought some of those investments. We knew they would be called. And then five hundred thousand mature. And then since March thirty first, we had two point six million mature and about another one million dollars called. Um net change um was very small on invested versus matured was point zero two one percent. That's because a lot of what's maturing right now is stuff we bought years ago as rates were going up. And now as rates are going down, we're still purchasing, they've kind of caught up with each other. And the net change in investments for the year is for almost four point five million. Um as Matt man uh mentioned, we're actively managing the bank balances. So we did take uh two point six million from camp and put it into Leif. Camp has a shorter duration and they're much more volatile, so uh while it's secure investments, the yield is more volatile. And their yield dropped very quickly with the yield curve. But whereas um Leif with its two hundred day uh duration is much slower to drop. Normally here, I would have the uh Federal Reserve's projection of GDP, since they did not have a meeting in March. I just showed what the GDP changes are. And you can see Q one, as Matt mentioned, was uh minus five percent. So we had a contraction or negative growth in the first quarter. And unemployment, uh I extended this out through April, so you could see the difference. It was still very good all the way up till mid February, it started to increase. And then you can see in April, how went below five percent to about fourteen percent. Uh inflation rates, inflation did drop off. Um this inflation indicator would probably most likely be the uh due to the decrease in fuel prices is why inflation dropped off so much over the prior year. So in this slide, normally I would have the Fed funds projection, but as I said, since they did not have a meeting, um what I decided to show was the changes over the last three years. So you can see where they increased up through December of twenty eighteen. And then last year, they had three decreases. And then this year in March, they decreased uh quite a bit. And then toward later in March, they decreased all the way to zero to point two five percent. And I think that was our presentations. I'll let Matt come back in if you have any questions.
Thank you, Dino. All right, any questions for the city treasurer? I don't see any. Oh, Carol, yes, councilmember first.
I just want to thank you, Matt. I know this is your first quarterly report, and you did a great job, and we just really appreciating our treasure. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, I think that was it. Thanks, Matt. Appreciate your time and and hard work. Okay, let's see, we are on to reports. Oh, I'm sorry. Do we need to do anything about that? No, I don't think so. Oh, file and report. We do need consensus to file and forth uh to file and report. So um anyone opposed to filing and reporting? No, we have consensus, Madam Clerk. All right, city clerk, reports?
None this evening, thank you.
City treasurer we heard from. And they're done. Councilmember Jeru.
Uh yes, um you know, when uh I ran for this office last time and the time before that, um I had made a promise to everybody that basically you would always know how I felt about a certain subject, um and you'd always know my rationale behind it. And with everything going on right now, I think it's time I paid up on that. Like most of you, um on May twenty fifth, I watched the murder of George Floyd. I say murder because there quite simply is no alternative version of the story. It was shocking in its brutality. I was speechless, couldn't believe what I was watching, confused when I first saw it. The thought was, how did this system of justice we have worked so hard to build fail so completely and catastrophically that quickly in that moment? As that realization sunk in, those emotions turned to both sadness and anger. And over subsequent days, when I started looking at news report after news report and media thread after thread, comment after comment, I immediately got the feeling that this uh what was being felt was palpably different um than anything I'd seen in the past. It it hit people hard, and it hit people in places that bring out deep and painful memories and emotions. I saw equal parts hurt, anger, sadness, disappointment, frustration, and an awful lot of resentment. I'll tell you what I also saw, though. I saw that people care. They care a lot, people all over the world, all ages, from young to old, all races, all religions. Everyone saw this for the injustice that it was. It was a essentially a community coming together in a horrible time, and and I'm not just talking about El Segundo. We are all part of a much bigger community than our little town. And I saw that community as a whole acknowledge that there is a problem, an injustice, and inequality that needs to be addressed with urgency. Now, El Segundo has a reputation. It has a stigma, has the stigma of racism. We need to acknowledge that. Any city with a hundred plus year history is going to have this, and we are no different. While we cannot change that history, we can change the future. And El Segundo has come a very, very long way over the past twenty plus years. We can also acknowledge that, while also understanding that we still have a long way to go with this. We now are multiracial, culturally diverse, and thankfully becoming more and more uh of that every year. Um it's not gonna happen overnight, but but based on uh the diversity of people that I see commenting every day and supporting peaceful protests, like the one we had last Sunday, the one that we had, the ones we had in the South Bay this week, and even what we had today, I I believe we're getting closer. Uh we are also becoming a much younger city. We're filled with intelligent and socially aware young adults, teenagers and families who really want to see change happen. They want their voices heard. Let them speak. Let them ask the questions they need to ask, even if it makes us very uncomfortable. We need to let them exercise their right to peacefully protest. Let them get out their emotions, give them an outlet. They need to get out and they need to get this out. And and we need to learn from them, because it is they who will truly bring about the type of societal change I think we're all hoping for. In the end, we are essentially driven by equal parts, uh by in equal parts by our experiences, our passions and our fears. These three things result in our putting people and events into a box. We do this because it is easier for us to process and justify our own reactions and emotions. I'm gonna give you two examples. We have the civil unrest that is happening across the country. Depending on your personal perspective and experiences, you may view the individuals in P as peaceful protesters exercising their First Amendment rights. Or you just may see rioters, looters, looters and opportunists. The truth is, these are two completely different groups with completely different agendas. But we tend to paint it all with one brush, and that is an injustice. People have the right to a peaceful protest, and that needs to be both encouraged and supported. It's an opportunity to listen and to learn. However, that door does swing both ways. Protests also bring out our fears. It may be a business owner afraid to have their business destroyed, or a young family with small kids who are fearful that 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 it might turn into a situation like we had in Santa Monica. We need to understand and accept those that those fears are real and not simply dismiss that by saying it's racist. You cannot expect one side to accept and honor your right to protest peacefully if you also in turn don't accept and understand that there are fears associated with that. Let's instead use this as an opportunity for each side to educate the other and find common ground, because in the end, common ground is where the magic happens, because it creates mutual understanding. Second, example, law enforcement. These men and women protect and serve us every day, and the overwhelming majority are incredible people who perform their job with dignity, honor and bravery. However, it's the bad officers, the exceptions, they're the ones who get depressed. The entire law enforcement community gets painted with that one brush. That is also an injustice. Law enforcement, as mentioned in the earlier comments by the chief, has that stigma of racism. It's hard to get around that, but they will. We need to work with law enforcement to make sure that every officer is committed to justice and equality and serving all Americans. If they are not, they should not have a badge. Our country is showing they are no longer willing to look the other way when bad cops abuse their power. Our good cops, though, the ones we look up to and respect, they also need to stand up the same exact way and say enough is enough. They need to get better, and they will get better, because society will demand that they do so. From my perspective, we need to understand that we are all unique and different. To accept and respect those differences creates what we are all after, which is equality. I read an LA Times article, written, I think it was an op ed piece, by Kareem Abu Jabbar, as a matter of fact, it was on May thirtieth. If you get a chance, take a look through that, because it was a great article. He ended this article with a quote, and it's it's stuck with me since I've read it. And what that quote is, is, what I want to see is not a rush to judgment, but a rush to justice. And my interpretation of that quote is, let's not continue to simply lay blame and point fingers. It's wasted time, emotion and energy. Let's instead focus on handling what the problem is, creating solutions and healing our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Jeru. Next up is councilmember Nicol.
Uh Lance, great words. Um not gonna try to follow that up. Uh there was a young lady that spoke in public comment that said something, and I wrote it down.
She said that with privilege, she actually said with white privilege, comes responsibility. And I think we, as council members, it is a privilege to represent our small town when it comes to policymaking, and I believe that privilege comes with a responsibility. I also believe that, as I said earlier, our ears are more important than our voices, but our actions ultimately, in the coming months and the coming years, will speak volumes to what we actually heard. So I would just like to make a commitment to our city that I'm hearing both sides. I will, if someone else that I'm on this council with doesn't bring up strategic planning, as Mayor Protem Pimentel had mentioned, about adding it to one of our strategic goals and making this a conversation that comes up on a regular basis. And, you know, I am a, born and raised, born and raised, South Bay, white male. I can't say that I know hardship. I can't say that I understand prejudice against me, because I've never felt that. What I can say is that I see and hear everything, and I feel for those. And the youth out there that is marching onto City Hall, you know, stay safe, keep it positive, continue to share your feelings, your thoughts, and your emotions. And, I mean, if we, as humans, can create a rocket that lands itself on a drone ship, I think we can find a way to see equality and eliminate racism, at least in our small town. And I'm willing to make that effort. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Nichol. Councilmember Prustak?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Drew and Councilmember Nichol. Your words are very, I follow your sentiment pretty much. I do want to thank the youth for being engaged in our town, seeing them on Sunday, and then seeing them today. It was great to see peaceful protesting. You know, it's important that we implement change, but to make change, you really have to do it with positivity, and negativity doesn't help anybody. So please, you know, reach out to me if you want to have any dialogue for productive change. But I do ask that you keep negative posts and negativity off social media. It's very hurtful to others, and that is not productive, and it will actually cause more damage than good. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Prustak. Mayor Protem?
Certainly not as eloquent as some of our other speakers. So I think I would just simply echo their sentiments and say that, you know, in contentious times, it can be difficult to be patient enough to take in the context in which other people make their decisions. But I think we're all better served to a degree if we can do that. And with that, I would just thank everyone for their comments, and I have nothing further.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I want to reflect on a couple of words I heard as well from the youth, not only when I was in the middle of the circle in Civic Plaza, but also in our public comments. One was listen, and Councilman Nichol reflected on this beautifully. We have two ears, we have one mouth, and I even found myself in that circle talking more than I probably should have been doing. And I wanted so badly to listen and to demonstrate that we do care, but that's not enough. He also said that actions speak louder than words, effectively, Councilman Nichol, and I believe that to be true. And time will tell, and I'm absolutely committed as well to changing the culture of the town. Great words, Councilmember Drew. I think you really spelled out the degree and the gravity of the challenge, the problem, the opportunity that we have before us as a nation and as a city. I also heard a woman tonight say, "Be humble. Listen and be humble." So I'm going to work on that, and I encourage my peers to do the same. I also know that we need to collaborate with people of color and all color. This has to be a collective solution. And I already alluded to this, but we've started that process. We will form a task force or Town Hall. We'll figure out a way to let people speak to us in a safe environment where they feel heard. And I personally look forward to helping shape a new chapter in this city's history, legacy. And I think that's going to be one. I know that'll be one that honors empathy, compassion, tolerance, and acceptance of all people. And so I'm encouraged by that. We've got a lot of hard work ahead of us. And I believe in this council, the staff, and the city as a community to get there. I don't think it'll be easy, but as I always tell my kids, if it's not uncomfortable, you're not pushing yourself hard enough. We have to get outside our comfort zone and embrace this opportunity and really help shape our community. So I, for one, look forward to that. Mr. Mitnick?
Actually, can I just quickly, I think you skipped me.
I did, I did, yeah, because you're, you are, you're not on my list. Sorry. Oh, no, you are. You're buried down there. Go ahead, Mark.
The clerk, the clerk says, I just wanted to clarify. We had received, when this meeting started, the county had sent out a text about the curfew tonight, said it was 10 o'clock. And then within the last hour, they've now, I don't know if it was a change, mistake, whatever, but it is now 9 o'clock. The county curfew tonight is 9 o'clock. That's been messaged out. Just wanted to add that clarification. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. I appreciate that. Yeah, a little confusing. That was it, I assume? Okay, we're going to go on to Mr. Mitnick.
Mr. Mayor and the members of the council, thank you for your patience with respect to the technical difficulties that we were experiencing earlier. Hopefully, we'll be back in our regular meeting format in the near future. Anyhow, while I was out, as I indicated earlier, the police chief and I did spend some time with some of the speakers. And we went out into the quad, and we had a very good conversation, got some great feedback. And I'll follow up with the council on the issues that you raised about responding to what we heard from the speakers today. I'll tell you one of the things I'd like to share with all of you and those that are watching. All five of these council members care about the issues that were articulated. They wouldn't have run for office and dedicated so much time to public service if they didn't want to bring about positive change. So, and I want to also add, diversity is one of this organization's greatest strengths. And the organization, like the community, is far more diverse today than it was 10, 20, 30 years ago. So with that said, we will also work, reach out to the school district to work more closely with the district, whether they're the elected officials on the school board with the council members, the superintendent and myself, and the management there and the management here, and look at how can we get students to be more interested in local government? Because local government is not taught in our schools, and there are reasons for that. It's not an El Segundo thing. But these folks who spoke today and the issues they articulated, if they want to see change, they need to run for office. They need to know more about how local government works. So if council is supportive, I'm happy to work with the school district to see what we can do. We have the civic day that we do with the school district. Perhaps we work diversity and inclusion into the next project that we work on with the school district. So lots of exciting opportunities, but the people who were protesting today, we will follow up with them. I've got some contacts, and we'll go forward, as the mayor said. That's really it, council. The next meeting will be on June 16th. We do have the short-term mental item coming back before you. That'll likely be one of the hot topics on that agenda, unless that gets continued even further. That's it. Thank you very much, council.
Thank you, Mr. Mitnick. Before we adjourn, I think it's appropriate that we take a minute of silence and honor the life George Floyd and close in his honor's memorial. So I'm going to start the timer. If I could, I'll ask you guys all to just take a moment. Thank you. Okay, thank you. We are adjourned at 6:01 PM.